Please join us for an invocation led by Elder Elijah Perry. The Church of God by faith and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Mike Holland.
Say good evening to Honorable Mayor, to all our city officials, to his waiting audience. By his, let's pray. Father, oh Lord our God, again I create and I make the lover of all mankind. We come humbly today or tonight before that throne of mercy. We come in the name of your precious son Jesus, always to give you thanks and give you praise and glory and honor. We thank the Lord for allowing us to, we are similar together. And Lord, did we come tonight, oh God, that we attend our city business. Father, we pray now that you look on all our city officials. We pray, Father, that you continue to give them strength and give them power to lead this fair city in the way this should go. Father, in the mighty name of Jesus, rely that we're living in dangerous times, sometimes with dangers all around. But we rely that you is our protector, you is our God. We pray that you continue to bless us according to thy rich and in glory. Father, we pray that you look on the President of these United States. Father, we pray in the mighty name of Jesus that you continue to, oh God, give him knowledge and understanding. Help him to seek you, Lord, in making every decision. Relie, oh God, all our help coming from thee. I heard David say, "I lift my eyes unto the hills, from which coming my help." My help coming from the Lord, which made the heaven and earth. Blessed now according to your rich and in glory, we be careful to give you the praise, glory and all the honor. In Jesus' name we pray, and amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Honorable. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elder Perry. Next up, Christine is, do we have a quorum and proper notice been given?
Yes, Mayor Hawkins.
Okay, Tom, agenda updates?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Next, Commissioners, we have approval of minutes for October 2nd, 2025, City Commission meeting?
Of approval.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye. Okay, next up, we're coming up to audience to be heard. Please, if you'd like to address the commission, and you haven't filled out a card, the cards are to our left, next to the door. When you come up, three minutes, the clock will start once you begin speaking. And at three minutes, it'll be time to say adios, okay? Tom, you have any cards?
Yes, Cindy Newton.
Good evening, Cindy.
Good evening. Cindy Newton, Unincorporated, Eustis. And I would like to talk about Resolution Number 2598, the temporary underfund receivable from the General Fund to the State Porcher Fund. I'm hoping that'll be pulled for discussion so that we can get some clarification on what happened. In the staff report, it states that the deficit is due to timing of anticipated forfeiture revenue deposits. And I'm wondering if that's accurate and the timeframe for the General Fund to be reimbursed. And there's a lot of information floating around about this, and I just would like clarification.
Okay, thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
I have a card from Daniel DiVannazzo.
Welcome, Mr. Daniel.
Greetings all. Daniel DiVannazzo, local businessman here. Of course, there's a lot of good things going on and a lot of things that we'd like to have a trust. I do talk to a number of merchants regularly today. I would hope that we could address something I've approached you with twice before, and that is the storm water at George Morris Bay Pharmacy. And now, I understand we had an exceptional amount of rain, but even in the regular rains, and I've collected pictures, he still has standing water adjacent to the side entrance to his building, which is where a lot of people park. There are also a place where people will pull over to get, they can't, don't have the ability to come in, so they will actually take the prescriptions out to their vehicle. There's still a significant problem there, and I think we're all pretty aware of it. And I don't know if it's just we're hands-off because the state has the highway and then the county has the highway, and so we're just gonna let it, put up with it and continue to let it collect water. And in this last rain, I'll tell you what happened, the 19 inches. I have a storm water collector behind my property where Connor and Precious is, right there at the corner of Bay and Lake Shore. It had four construction cones around it. There was so much water, the cones started to float, two of them inserted into the other, and then the water moved them into the receptor and blocked the hole. So a receptor that was this big around went to this size. And I couldn't get, I can't get them out, they're still there. And I called and I said, "Hey, I've got pictures, I still got two cones stuck in that receptor, I could not pull them out myself." And you know, that's what happens when you get older. And so that needs to be addressed, but the water, I want to tell you how bad the water is. The water was so deep, it actually flowed into that building. It flowed into the building. So I think that whole intersection down there, because of the hills that we have coming down from Orange Avenue and then the next block, whether this is the state responsibilities or the county, I think we should maybe assign somebody to see really what is a resolution. I think it really needs to be addressed with what is the resolution? And then we could talk about how we're gonna pay for it, because there has to be a resolution. You just can't have, I'll tell you what I'm afraid of. That intersection is gonna have so much water, and somebody's gonna come down the hill, their car is in a hydroplane, and it's gonna hit my building. So I don't want that to happen, but it is, it really is a genuine safety concern there. And also pedestrians, and then that, I wanted to close with this today. So I don't know if you know this, but I paid a significant amount of sales tax and also property tax and also utility fees at the Lake Eustis Waterfront Grill last year and the year before. And it would be nice if we could coordinate a sidewalk to join the intersection down along Lake Shore.
Time's up.
I got you.
Thank you, Daniel. Tom, you take notes on the...
Yes, we have some things working as far as storm water. But yes, I took some notes and we'll work on it.
Thank you. Do you have any other cards?
That's it as far as cards. We do have a card for at the time of the item.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Okay, next we move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items anyone would like to pull?
I'd like to pull 4.2, 4.3, 4.4.
Two, three, four.
The budget-related stuff.
Okay.
I mean, my first concern is, it's just impossible to get our arms around all that information and all that numbers in a short period of time. But I have some, it's just a tremendous amount of information for, at least for me. And I think we need some detailed explanation and walking through that process, especially for a new guy. And I can't get my arms around it yet, I didn't have enough time to be able to get the questions, get with finance and do all of that, getting it when it is. So I had a thought, I don't know what you guys think about it, but I was hoping we would get some detailed explanation. I'd like to see copies of the POs. I don't know if you guys are open to considering when we do the next workshop for the downtown, that we maybe add half an hour at the end or an hour to discuss and get an understanding of this so that we can move through the budget year a little bit more transparent.
Is it just to get an explanation of how the POs work?
No, it's just a global thing on how we're doing this. Why are we, why are we, you know, over so much? I mean, I could go through the stuff if you want to now, but I don't really want to. But I'd be, I'm open, I'm ready to do it if you want to. But just to help us understand how we're $11.8 million moving, you know, over and things like that, just a little bit of education, I guess, as well. What are we doing wrong? What are we not doing wrong? What are we doing right? And how do we, you know, look at those options? I think they're big decision-makers for a commission.
Hold on.
That, public safety and ordinances.
So we've had the request to pull these three items, that was 4.2, 4.3, 4.4?
Yes, ma'am.
And since we've had a request for 4.5, let's pull it and have an explanation.
Okay.
Okay. So then what's left on the consent will be 4.1?
So want to vote?
Yep. Yeah, so move on 4.1 if you'd like.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and properly second, approval of 4.1. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
I'll go ahead and start with the items we pulled from consent before we proceed. First item is Resolution Number 25-92, a resolution by the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025 and ending September 30, 2026 for the general sales tax, community redevelopment, water sewer, R and R, storm water, water impact fees and sewer impact fees funds, and by adjusting expenditures, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflicts you're with and providing for an effective date. Ms. Carr?
Do you think we can entertain, I don't know how the commission feels if we entertain sticking that at the end of that workshop. I think I need to see some of those POs. I want to see if it goes beyond what Lori can probably give us right now.
The end of which?
The workshop, we're doing the next one, I think the Dr. Levy one, the only one we got.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't agree with him, it's over $11 million.
And I think we talked about it before. Emily?
I think if there's some questions about it, then it should be addressed. If people have concerns about it. I did get a chance to talk to Miranda and to Tom this afternoon about it, but I'm not sure that everybody else has had that opportunity.
Okay, let's hear what Lori has to say.
The purchase orders are for, there are funds in Humbert.
I thought, I think we had a consensus to do that.
Well, let's hear what she has to say, because she may answer some of the questions. And that's not saying we won't do it, but let's hear what she has to say.
The first resolution is for the existing purchase orders where the projects are not completed, for whatever reason, they could be multi-year projects. They could have got started a little bit later than anticipated, but those are already commitments that we have based on our purchase orders. And all that would do is carry those purchase orders over from one year to the next so that we can continue to pay our vendors and have the funding for that. And that's the explanation of 2592.
Okay.
So I guess I would ask, if you, we can provide all of those purchase orders for your review. I will, I mean, it's potentially a lot of information, but we're happy to provide individual purchase orders if that's what you'd like to see. Or would you like to review these, determine which ones you'd like to see, and then give us a list as opposed to us pulling all of them? But if you give us some feedback, we'll...
Yeah, is there a way we could get a breakdown for all the, for the funds and what projects they're being linked to and...
Wasn't that attached?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one by General Ledger account number that was attached to it.
So my questions go into the procedural part. As a city, some of them in their age, you know, were any of the POs canceled? If they weren't, do we look at them and see if the direction of our city as we're changing and other capital expenses might be coming up that we adjust to fit the time? Because time has elapsed as much as 24 months old. And I think that's a perfect time to revisit some of them all and make sure that we're continuing to drive the city in the direction that the majority of us feel capital expenses should go. Because that seems to be a changing thing. So it's more lengthy, it's more procedural, and it's more understanding and revalidating, I guess, could be another word, especially with the downtown development, infrastructure issues, the flood, new issue.
Is your request to get in the weeds or just have a better bird's eye view?
I'm not sure what "get in the weeds" means to you, but I'm not looking to turn it into a day project. Just need to, want to go through those, make sure that we, as elected officials, are putting the money where we still want it to be and if we want some of these things changed in priority and where they are in a priority list and what the priorities should be going forward. We're in a very evolving time.
Mike?
I've read the report, and I'm one of the rare, a few of us have been here long enough that we've been able to read these things, we know what we're looking at. I understand the need to try to understand it better. I would move, I would need to go ahead and vote on this, but if we need understanding, my concern is, are we going to slow down something that's already in the process? Are we gonna stop projects because the vendors can't be paid?
Some of them are 24 months old, so yeah, I think a couple of weeks is not gonna kill anybody. If it's gonna slow down everything, why did we wait 24 months on some of them? Then I'd like an explanation to explore each one of those and look at them. That doesn't make sense.
I don't think that we waited 24 months. I think it may have started 24 months ago and is still ongoing.
Mr. Mayor? Rick, I think, some of these projects are under Rick, so I think if he could maybe give an explanation on some of that.
Thanks, Lori. Stay close.
How's Rick Eric, engineering? Just some concerns that I have as far as waiting, looking down the list. One for a construction job, the 44 bypass. We've been that out, they've been working on it. We encumbered the full amount of funds. The work is not complete because October 1 doesn't automatically mean that we're gonna finish construction. See, those remaining funds have to be rolled over. The contractors are under contract right now, that I brought to commission and we approved. We're asking, and this is just one case, $381,000 remaining to get rolled over. The work is completed, if we don't roll this over, I can't pay my contractors.
I mean, that's a great example, but that doesn't represent a whole 11 million until the whole scale moving in one direction, but I'll do, Spike Rick. So I think transparency and I think understanding it and potentially adjusting is our job as a commission. I can't, I can't take a shift of 11.8 million and just say, "Okay, on a consent agenda." First of all, I don't think it ever should have been on a consent agenda, but thank you.
I will, and maybe I can make the distinction between the two resolutions. The first resolution is for items where we have issued purchase orders and they are active projects. The second resolution, which is the larger amount, is projects where we have not issued purchase requisitions or purchase orders. And so I don't know if you feel, if, maybe there's, there is a distinction between the two. The process is different for the two. And so I don't know if you feel comfortable moving forward with the first resolution that involves projects where purchase orders have been issued and are actively going on versus the second resolution, which is carryover of projects that we intend to do but don't have obligations or purchase orders. So I don't know if you see a distinction there where we can move forward with the first.
I do, I do see that difference.
And I, and I agree.
That's not really the gist of my issue. So if you're saying, "Would I be okay with 4.2?" Based on that, I would probably say yes.
And what's the difference, sorry, what's the amount difference between 4.2 and 4.3?
How much is in 4.2?
How much is in 4.2?
Yeah, I can pull that up.
One, the purchase orders is 2.3 million and then the unencumbered funds. And those are commitments that we do have to pay. Then the ones that we have not yet started and issued for is 11.5 million.
Yeah, so 4.2 is 2.338 million and then...
So I'm okay, I'm just one, but I'm okay with moving that one so these guys can keep paying what they've already okayed, what's already in process.
4.2.
That would be 4.2.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of resolution.
Sorry, 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 because we pulled from consent. And I read the title, we need to allow for public input if there are no more questions from commission.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter?
Seeing that, I'll close public input.
I move approval of Resolution 25-92.
A second.
It's been moved and properly second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
So as far as Resolution Number 25-93, which is item 4.3, I'll read the title and then you can discuss if you want to table this item. A resolution by the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, amending the budget of the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025 and ending September 30, 2026 for the general sales tax, street improvement, parks, impact fees, cemetery trust, storm water, economic development grants, community redevelopment, water, sewer utility, R and R, and grants, water impact and sewer impact fees funds, and by adjusting expenditures, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflicts you're with and providing for an effective date. Did you want to hear from Ms. Carr first or...
Yes, please, Lori.
These are the projects that have been identified that we do have funding for, that we are going to do at some point. And we just have not gotten the purchase orders issued for whatever reason. Mostly, we're probably still in negotiations with some of these. Or like Coolidge, we don't have signed contracts yet, I don't think, but we know we need that money, and if we don't have it, we will not be able to sign those contracts. Without the funds, all of these projects would be on hold at this point because we don't have budget dollars for them. And this is just the process to move those dollars from one year to the next.
How long does it typically take us to get a PO through? It depends on what it is.
Yeah, it really depends. Rick could probably answer better on projects where it's a regular purchase, it's not very long at all.
Okay, mhm. But getting a PO, you have to do, it goes through the process, if I'm not mistaken, you have to bid it out, correct?
For projects, yes.
Yeah, for projects, bid it out, and then the step after that. Rick, can you come up for a minute?
Yes.
Okay, we bid it out, okay, and then what comes after that step?
Okay, so as we go through, I'll use the cemetery for example. So we've been working on cemetery, we get the design done. We went through, we bid it out, we started the bid process, I think, August, September? We went out for bid, got the bids back. I brought to you in the first meeting of October, the contract, the low bid contract, that was recommended for approval. I had a pre-construction meeting to get the contractors started, they're ready. We had to cancel it because it was funded last year. That money has not been rolled over. Had we got the bids back, say, the last week of September, we could have executed the contract. Now I'm in hold waiting for the rollovers. So I am at the point where my bid is starting to sunset. We hold it for 45 days, we're closed, that's why I wanted to get the pre-construction meeting going. I have it rescheduled for the 8th because we're putting this in. So every job is different. You know, Coolidge, we've been working for a long time, and some of that we've rolled over twice because it has expanded so much. Where, you know, we have 8.8 million budgeted, the majority of that is all in rollovers because it was gonna be prior year.
Now, when it sunsets, that means you have to go out and bid it again.
You have to go through the bid process again, yeah, they only hold it for a certain period of time.
Okay, and then the possibility of the price going up, the cost going up?
I mean, I guess it could go down as well, but basically you scrap your bids, I mean, I've never seen that, but you scrap your bids at that point, so.
And did the budget we just approved include these numbers from carryover?
It's a completely separate process. And when we go through the budget process, we don't budget for the funds that we know we're gonna need if we have them already, because this is the mechanism to move those funds and not have to budget them twice. Because theoretically, we could let all of these lapse, but then we would have had to budget them in the current year.
Okay, waiting, why are we, why do we wait till it's so crucial that it's gonna hurt us potentially? We don't know, but we're held hostage to a PO. And budget was done, we had budget meetings forever. So I think we need to look at these. I think you polled the commission, Mayor, and you had three people, we're still going on. I asked that we take an hour at the end of the workshop and let us go through the detail ahead of time and hopefully make it quick.
And if I may just interject for a moment, the numbers, we can't come up with them any earlier because we don't know what is still out there as far as available funds and what invoices we still have to pay.
So you got these numbers Friday?
I got them after October 30th, 31st, and we did all of our year-end invoices. That's when everything was cut off.
So then we should have got them October 31st. Not, you know...
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Commissioner's body. Because of the amount, I think we need a second look. I think we need, I think we need to look at these amounts and see what we really want to get done because of everything that's going on in Tallahassee right now and property taxes. We need to look at everything, so I think it deserves a second look, I really do.
And prioritize and see if there's anything that we didn't realize that we need to change because it's the changing times that have occurred. This property tax thing is huge, huge.
I think that we, and this is from where I sit, I think that we have the people doing stuff that we don't know. And when I say that, I mean, she lives and breathes this stuff. Rick lives and breathes this stuff. They know what's going on in our city. We're supposed to be big picture guiding, and I think we're spending, we're gonna be spending a lot of time and slowing down. I think that's the problem that we run into with our downtown. We try and nitpick and, and in some cases it's good, but we try and nitpick and we try to become the professionals, and it slows us down because we ask them, they respond. We come back with 10 other questions, they respond 10 times. So I think we need to be real careful about what we're doing. And I understand your concern, but I don't like the fact that now we're gonna put it on hold and we have projects that are out there.
We're not gonna put it on hold, we're gonna keep working on it through the time between now and then. I'm gonna get some information hopefully from Tom, who was very willing to help and get an understanding.
We have projects out there.
No, this isn't any projects that are in the process, we already approved those. These are ones to look at, let's see where we're at. It's our responsibility, it's one of the three main things that we do. It's $11 million. I don't know if any constituents want us to just consent over continuation of $11 million without looking at it, looking at the detail.
Was any of this stuff, when we did our budget, did our budget workshops, was any of this brought up?
It was brought up in the sense that when we did the five-year CIP, if it was a current year, meaning last year, project, it was... It was brought up in the sense that when we did the uh, five-year C I P, if it was a current year, meaning last year project, it was shown. But it wasn't necessarily discussed at length, because this is, this is the typical process that we use.
And we weren't aware that it was going to uh, expire back then, otherwise, that's a perfect time, you're right. So going forward, this year, we need to talk about those when they come up during budgeting time, this one's not gonna make it, what do you wanna do?
Well, I was just gonna say that every one of these would have been approved as part of a budget, that may have been three years ago, it may have been two years ago, it may have been this year. Uh, but every one of these would have been approved as part of a budget, like for Coolidge, for example. I mean, that's been a project three years in the making, and so that's, that has been approved during a budget process. Maybe not this past budget process.
So we're essentially, we'll end up. Looking over the work of previous commissions, doing twice the work.
Well, I I mean, I I get that priorities change over time, um, so, but yeah, I mean, this. Everything on this list would have been approved by a commission at some point.
So what we're saying, if we don't, is that we're not going to look at what we're approving for eleven million dollars to recheck before we go. We'll just kinda blanket it and go, and our responsibility as commissioners to watch the budget as one of the top three things, we're gonna let go? No, I, we we need to look at it, sir, all due respect, and I think you had a majority, um, and continue to go on it, but I'm okay.
Did we, did we have a majority?
Did, is this the one that has the general fund, sales tax fund, that's eleven million dollars?
The 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 total is eleven million across all funds.
Okay, then clarify, what, for instance, sales tax fund. What what will that do, what is it about, and what would he want to see that's different from what's on here?
Well, I can, so sales tax fund is the uh, the ten fund, it's the funds where we participate with the county and the other municipalities. And we uh, divide up the uh, sales tax revenue from the county. Um, and so, just looking at the list, uh, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, uh, about twenty projects. Uh, and that totals five point nine million, um, and so if you were to. If you were to say, let's not do a project on this list, that money would stay in the sales tax fund and be available for other sales tax fund projects.
So if we have something else that's more important, that's shifted that we've picked up on, be it, for example, flooding, be all of these, we can adjust them. It's kinda like driving down the road, and you're on cruise control, and every once in a while, you wanna adjust. Not doing that, in my opinion, would be not the right, not the right way to do, so. We need to be very much aware where our money's going, and be responsible for it.
And adjust.
Do they all have something being done underneath them, are are in process?
So I would say every project on this list, um, the, um, so staff spend some time going through this list. And everything on this list, um, based on commission direction, we are moving forward with. So, uh, if there were projects that we felt the commission did not wanna move forward, or had kinda fallen off the list. Those are not on this list, so this only incru- includes projects that staff reviewed. And said, we believe it's the will of the commission to move forward with these projects.
But none of these have been started, and none of them have been directed to go started. I can't believe we've turned up thirty minutes of what it probably could have taken us to do this, go if, when we have the documents. To be responsible over eleven point some million, maybe I'm just. Maybe that's just a lot of money to me, but that's, we can never go wrong in being responsible. And I I'm sorry to people sitting out there that we're taking thirty minutes to argue about whether we should look at what we're spending with taxpayer money.
Uh, continue, Tom, what were you saying?
Well, I I would say it depends on your definition of started, so again, Coolidge, as an example. We have done a lot of design and engineering, so we have started Coolidge, but when you look at this list, there's.
Which one does Coolidge follow, doesn't it?
So Cool- Coolidge comes from several funds, because it's a road project, it's a water project, it's a wastewater project. And so it has come from several funds, so, but what you're seeing in this rollover are the construction funds. And so, there are projects that we have done something related to the project, design, engineering. Uh, and now it's time to do construction, and what you're seeing is the construction component. Um, but, it's something, i- if it's on this list, we have not issued a P O for it.
So will two or three weeks cost us anything?
Uh, I I would defer to Rick on some of these, Coolidge, we are, we're in the thick of it on Coolidge.
And as Rick said, the cemetery as well, we'll have to go back out to bid.
There, there are some of these that, sure, we could wait three weeks.
Can you tell us which ones are not going to end the bid?
There's sixty-three projects on the list, so it's now, I guess.
No, um, okay, what what, what do you decide, Mike?
You're just polling the commissioner, because I do have to open it up again.
Yeah, I don't know what everyone's saying. Uh, is there anyone out there would like to um, speak on this matter? Okay. Second look. Second look, second look, Emily?
I I think if there's some questions, then if everybody isn't clear on it, then we probably do need to satisfy them too.
So, we can set this up for uh.
We don't have to wait till then, right?
We could, we could do December ninth or December twelfth. Um, I guess my question would be, if you have questions on specific projects, please let us know. If you'd like us to present on all sixty-three, let us know that.
Okay, so let's do it after Dr. Levy?
I think that'd be the best time.
That way, we're already all together, so set it up for.
That, that's fine, but the, we can't approve anything at that meeting, because it's a workshop. And so it won't, it'll have to go in January.
It gives us more time to review sixty-some items.
We can't vote on it with after.
No, no, we can discuss it, yeah.
But you're prolonging what they need to do.
It would have to be advertised, whatever the decision is.
Advertised it, we could, we we could vote on it, couldn't we?
You'd have to hold a special, uh, special meeting. In order for you to vote, because right now, we just have December ninth. The next meeting is scheduled until January, and by then, I don't know if any of these uh, P Os that may have been, or expired. I think Rick was talking about that earlier.
Might go down, he said too, that'd be great.
So if we do, if we do the ninth, then um, we don't vote on it until January?
If we do the twelfth.
We can do the ninth.
We can vote on it on the ninth.
We can vote on it at commission on the ninth, or we can have a special city commission meeting following the workshop on the twelfth. Otherwise, it would have to wait until January.
I think the ninth.
Yeah, I think the ninth, okay. So, Dr. Levy to make sure, but we don't need him.
When he's done, he can go, yeah.
Well, the ninth is commission meeting, and I will be here for that, not, I will not be here on the twelfth, so there, there will not be. An opportunity to have counsel.
You're good with that?
For that.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's been a lot of back and forth.
You're good with the ninth?
Does that, does that give you enough time to get everything together by the ninth?
I'm not sure exactly specifically what it is that is being requested.
Because you've already given us everything, okay.
Yeah, I'm 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 good with the ninth.
Let's go with the ninth.
Now, uh, Tom, my suggestion, if, I know we have an L P A, pop, uh, for that day, can we move up? Maybe a five o'clock start to answer the questions, and then, related to this, if we're gonna need more than your typical resolution time.
Whatever works for commission is fine.
Could I make a suggestion, please? Could we approve the ones that Rick really needs to be, have approved, that we're going to lose contracts and have to rebid on?
Because they've.
Does that have to be done tonight, or can you wait, could that wait till the ninth? And I I would need clarification, so the commission's informed, that way we know how to move forward. Because what's gonna happen is, I need to, there's gonna have to be a motion to table this item for for another meeting, so, procedurally, so I just wanna know.
Right, I mean, everything can wait, it's a matter of how long do we want it to wait, because if we wait, we can rebid, and that's fine.
We're talking about the ninth now, Rick, till the ninth.
See, I I don't know, each of our contracts, depending on the complexity, is the amount of time that we hold. Uh, the library, I say, we have sent, hold the price for ninety days. The cemetery was forty-five, I need to check Coolidge, si- the cemetery will expire. Um, and we rebid it, I mean, if that's what we need to do, we rebid the job, that's okay. Um, you know, same as Coolidge, we're running up on some grants. That have stipulations, we have four, potentially five different grants on Coolidge. If we miss this bid on Coolidge, we need to get grants extension, so everything can be slowed down. It's a matter of what do we wanna do? And where it, I mean, I I can't move forward, I've canceled the pre-construction meeting already. We've got it rescheduled, I'll cancel that, and we'll just rebid it, so it's, it's. I I don't, I don't know the answer you're looking for, everything can wait. I mean, it it's just not a matter of being able to pull the trigger on the ninth, because we vote on it that. Some of the jobs, I won't be able to issue the next day. But we can rebid, I can get started, and we can rebid, and that's fine.
Thank you, Rick.
Are there, are there any of these that's immediate, that we don't need to, we need to fix or approve or do whatever? I don't wanna see them have to um, rebid and prolong the time and go through all that again. You know, if there's some that we could just move along tonight, because of the urgency of it all, because of what's um, needs to be done. And then study the rest of them, is that possible?
Would it be possible, Rick, I don't know if you or someone from the team, if we could um, kinda table this for right now and proceed with the agenda? Give them an opportunity to look over the list. And see if there are those urgent ones that um, Commissioner Lee is discussing to bring back, that way you guys can decide. You know, these can move forward, and then the rest get pulled for another meeting. If we're, if you're interested in knowing the the expiration date, otherwise.
Yeah, I think, you know, if if we wanna keep, if we wanna keep government moving, we we probably need to do that, look into that. Rick, uh, will it take you long to go through that, do a quick look through?
No, I'll, I need to stay for the stormwater one, that we're gonna discuss next.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Is that alright with the commission, to just give them an opportunity?
No, I think we have a mo- uh, we had a move up twice, we polled the commission, twice we went to table it till then, and we're still going on. I don't think that's procedurally right at all.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we were just talking about there are things that we wanna make sure they don't sunset. We wanna keep things moving, and he has told you, he's he's explained to us, that if we don't do certain things.
It could be less later.
Yeah, but you know it won't be.
Well, procedurally.
We have a responsibility to look, to look at this stuff. We have, that's our, that's part of our key thing, it's not our fault as a commission, that it's coming to us in the last minute, in the last second. Do it now, or all these terrible things are gonna happen, or it could be less, that's not financial.
What were you gonna say, Sasha?
Yes, I was gonna clarify, for Commissioner Asbadi, the procedurally, just stating um, your position. That you would want to have this discussed later isn't sufficient, this is discussion, there has to be a motion made in order for an action to be taken. And Commissioner Lee has asked if there's some information that could be used today to for, to facilitate your decision.
That anytime we go back and look at any meeting we've done, where you've polled, and we agreed, and we moved on. If no motion was made and followed through you, we acted incorrectly?
If it's related to other business, it's different, but there has to be a motion on the table for there to be.
Eleven point some million dollars of taxpayers' money, we've already burned up how much time it would take to do it on the ninth or the or the following. And for some reason, we don't wanna be accountable.
That's not what's happening here.
That's the perception, though.
Commissioner Lee asked a question about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Lee asked a question about which items would be sunsetting, and if. These are critical, and we asked if if this is something we could pull together for you today, so that you can then make that decision. It's just providing information for you to do that, you could still end up choosing not to move forward tonight. But there, I believe that that was a a a request of information that was made.
Okay, the project to me, that 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 really concerns me, and it's, believe it or not, it's not the cemetery, it's the Coolidge project. Because the Coolidge project is wrapped in state money, it's wrapped in county money, it's wrapped in different type of grants. If we drag our feet, if we show any hesitation right now on that project. We are going to lose state funding and county funding on that. That's the one that scares me, and we have already invested a lot of time and a lot of taxpayer money on that project. So, just be careful with what you do on it, that's my hesitation.
That's good input, can we?
I am, I am fi- cemetery project, I I want it done, but I'm not willing to die on that sword. What I want to do is make sure that Coolidge is finished, because I sure don't want that redheaded commissioner back in my face, or the representative back in my face tomorrow morning. If we vote something different.
Can we, can we make a motion to table this, except for the Coolidge?
If that's the, well, Rick is gonna come back with the information as to any other ones that involve.
Without having to send him to do anything, can I, is it valid to make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to table this, except for the Coolidge property.
You would wanna modify it just to approve Coolidge, essentially, is what you're saying.
You can say it that way.
And if there are other ones that are tied to grants, that's the other component, because.
Just Coolidge.
The other, what I'm talking about with the grants, just, you need to be informed, because if they, if those, those are state funds, they're not our funds. And I'm unclear if any of the other projects have um, are there any other projects that have state funds, or other grants that have been allocated?
I truthfully don't see.
Yeah, I can't think of any.
To just move this to the back end of this meeting, and let Rick bring something back to us, and then make a hard decision.
He asked him to bring us.
Right now, I'm fine with what you're saying, but let's see what Rick has to say, let's see if something else is tied to something that we're really gonna lose big time. Support and extra funding to, so I I don't see a, I mean, we've spent forty minutes on this now. I don't see us, what the problem is with waiting till the end of this meeting, it's not a long agenda, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, always is.
Yeah, so I I I just, my my motion is to go ahead and put this at the back end of this meeting and have a discussion at the end.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, he's been moving properly, second.
Who seconded that?
Emily.
We'll move it to the back of the agenda, but wanted your roll call, please?
This is, we're gonna do this at the end, right?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, he's gonna come back with the have-tos. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbadi?
No.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
The other item pulled from consent, four point four. Uh, resolution number twenty-five dash ninety-six, a resolution by the City Commission of the City of Eustis Lake County, Florida. Amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirty of twenty twenty-six. For the street improvement, stormwater, and wastewater utility funds, and by adjusting expenditures. Repealing all resolutions or part of resolutions in conflicts you're with, and providing for an effective date. Just you again, Ms. Carr?
This one is the emergency um, amendment that we're asking for in order to make all the repairs that were needed. Um, these numbers are Rick's best estimates of the projects, we had to pull it together fast, uh, because we have no budget dollars. So, until we have budget dollars, we're not able to pay anything. And this is setting up budget dollars so that we can move forward with all of the repairs, and pay the ones that have already been done.
And this is from the storm?
Yes, yes, sir.
Rick, did you wanna?
I can say, is there a chance uh, we'll be applying for any assistance to get some of this money back, since it was a?
I've not heard of any being available yet.
Tom, have you heard anything?
So, it it, we did not qualify for FEMA federal disaster funding, because it was too specific an event. Um, and I, you, as far as state funding, yes, the governor declared a state of emergency, as did the county and the city. Um, but I don't know if we're expecting any um, state funds. Uh, there's a possibility of some um, you know, I think insurance funds. Uh, but we don't know what that is at this point.
They've not yet done their site inspections, they're waiting for us to get this scheduled.
Commissioner, wanna hear from Rick on this one, I know he was waiting for that one.
Oh, Rick? Uh, any input on?
Um, in in regards to.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got, um, the, the funding, the emergency funding is going, it, it, will that include Spring Ridge?
No, this does not include Spring Ridge.
Okay.
So, at Spring Ridge, we're looking at about a half a million. You know, what we've done, we're, we're paying back in Mount Dora's emergency work contract that they already had in place. We had experience with CAF card. They did our utility job at Coolidge. So, we're out there, I spent majority of my time actually with the guys through the construction process, doing the engineering work that we needed. But, you know, we're looking at their equipment, their hourly rates, what they're doing. You know, and, and these are the best guess, you know, they don't have their invoices in from their suppliers on stuff. So, they can't give us, you know, hard numbers. But, their project management team has looked at it. We've been looking to make sure they're working as efficiently as they could and still get the project done. But, yeah, we had some real serious work that we were not able to do in-house.
Okay.
And we just got the last of the rooms opened yesterday.
Okay, thanks, alright, okay.
Are there any additional questions from commission?
Nope.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on resolution twenty-five dash ninety-six? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public input and give it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of resolution twenty-five dash ninety-six.
Can I get a second? Second. It's been moving properly. Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbody?
No.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Alright. Next item pulled from consent was four point five, resolution number twenty-five dash ninety-eight. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida, authorizing a temporary inter-fund receivable from the general fund to the state forfeiture fund for liquidity purposes in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents, providing for statutory authority, providing for reimbursement from future forfeiture revenues and providing for an effective date. I, the chief is going to probably speak on this and Ms. Carr kind of want to...
I guess Emily brought it up. Do you have any questions for the chief, right?
No, this was brought up by, um, member of the public.
Yeah.
Oh, Cindy brought it up.
Yeah. The res- I reviewed this item, um, after speaking with Ms. Carr and the chief. And this is the legal mechanism to take care of the deficit. So, this is the process, um, statutorily is what, as far as what we have to do. But, I know that there were specific questions and...
Okay.
That's, um, all I can say.
I don't have any questions, but I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, well, we're, sorry, we're still in, um, presentation and then we have to go to public input.
Chief, how did we, how did we get into a deficit in that?
It's called a mistake and humans make them actually from time to time, most of us. Uh, we had two funds, a federal and a state fund. Uh, we, we thought there was one, one account. So, we're very meticulous in what we do. We make sure we try to keep everything within compliance. But, we thought, they thought we had one account instead of two. So, on, or on the side of caution, we made sure we took the right, at, the right amount of money at the right account. And like I said, all this money, every last penny of it, went to the community. Something that wasn't done before I came here. But, I can tell you, we are going to give every bit of forfeiture money back to every community group, back to every kid. Twenty thousand dollars goes, we have a failing school that was having problems with their test scores. We gave them twenty thousand dollars to hire tutors. So, these kids can get their grades up, pass these tests that they're going through and have a chance. We give money to the junior football Panthers to buy equipment for the football team. We give money to charity. Not one penny was spent on anything else, not on salaries, not on overtime. Uh, and I'm going to continue to do it. Every penny I get from forfeiture, I'm giving right back to the community. It's called a mistake. They happen. It's going to be fixed. It's not a big deal.
And you have money, do you have money in, in the, the pipeline coming in?
Lot of money coming in. And it's all going back to the community. Some agencies, um, buy equipment with it, some agencies buy, um, for training. We're blessed that we have a great city here that funds a lot of this stuff that we can give it back to the community. I think when you give all your drug forfeiture money back to the community, back to these community programs to build that community engagement, to build that trust, to help inner-city, help church groups to, to do the right thing. Not only do you build that, that, that relationship with the community, but people benefit from this. And people are hurting right now in this country. There's people that don't, there's not a lot of resources to help these type of groups, uh, uh, that are charity groups that are looking for help. So, we're going to do it all day long. I'm going to continue to do it. And guess what? We're going to make more mistakes. Oh, well, it happens. It's not intentional. It's a mistake.
Chief, uh, for, for people that don't know where the money comes from?
Yeah. It comes from drug dealers and criminals. So, let the drug dealers pay for these programs. Let them pay. Why should we buy equipment when you give us everything we need? I've never been in a city where we have the best police equipment, uh, as far as cars, equipment, technology. My, when I worked for they, we didn't have an inch to what we have here as far as technology and equipment. But, community engagement is the key. If you do not have the community with you, if you think forty-seven police officers are going to solve your problem here in Eustis, you're crazy. So, everybody's duty is to be, and we have to break down, and we don't have problems here, but that's why. So, it's drug money from drug dealers and it's going back to the community, one hundred percent, period.
Okay. Alright, thank you, chief.
Thanks.
And chief, uh, just for you, part of the, um, the ordinance here is, or the resolution is that the twenty-seven thousand and change deficit, as forfeiture funds come in, are going to be remitted back, just to, you know, set back to zero and then...
Let, let me reiterate, we have money in the federal fund and the state fund.
Right, right. It's just, it's, they're different funds and that's, that happens.
Some people don't make mistakes. I, I, congratulations. I mean, I, I make mistakes all the time, every day. It's called, it's called being human. We hire from the human race and we make mistakes.
Absolutely. So, it's just to clarify that we're, that's been accounted for as far as, um, going back to the state fund.
There's no, there's no conspiracy, there's no dark cloud, there's no corruption. It's, you know...
It's all clear in, in the, in the resolution.
Some people just like to talk, 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 talk.
Okay, thank you, chief. Thanks, chief.
I believe a lot of it is just education, um, internally because I have a sheriff's office background. So, that's how I realized that the money, there's two separate sources and their eligibility requirements are vastly different. And so, when I saw this type coming through here and that one coming through there because finance, as he said, had mingled all those funds together previously. So, this is the first step in straightening all of this out so that going forward, this will not happen again.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. Thank you.
Okay, let's open up the public. Would anyone else, uh, in the audience like to speak? I know Ms. Newton, you spoke earlier. Did you want to speak again?
Uh, Cindy?
Ms. Newton?
Would you like to speak on this?
Would anyone else in the audience like to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, I will close public input and give it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Move approval of resolution twenty-five dash ninety-eight.
Okay, it's been moved in properly. Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Ma- Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Thank you, Lori.
Alright, now, under our regular agenda, we have resolution number twenty-five dash ninety-four. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eustis Lake County, Florida, approving a budget amendment in the general fund for the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to increase expenditures. A budget amendment in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the sales tax capital projects fund to decrease expenditures to provide for funding for an agreement for Barry Dunn McNeil and Parker LLC for Enterprise Resource Planning Advisory Services. Ms. Leeson?
Good, um, good evening commissioners. This is a budget amendment, um, to fund the enterprise resource consultant that was budgeted in the twenty-sixth, um, budget and approved. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand was in the sales tax, um, projects fund. Hundred and twenty-five thousand is budgeted in the water sewer fund. And this amendment is requesting to move the funds from the sales tax to the general fund. And the reason for this is the state of Florida, um, Florida statute, um, may authorize counties to levy the rate, sales tax rate, as well as the eligibility or the purposes which the proceeds can be expended. And municipalities, um, may use the proceeds for infrastructure which the state defines as, um, fixed capital expenditures or outlays for construction, reconstruction, improvement of public facilities that have a life expectancy of five years or more. Public fills, public facilities are for government purposes, they're fiber stations or like the, the building that we're currently in, City Hall. Also eligible are, um, municipal vehicles as well as computer equipment. On September twenty-ninth, um, the sales tax county board requires municipalities to have two oversight meetings a year for the purpose for reviewing what the expenditures are for. I attended the meeting on the twenty-ninth and the board had a question on the ERP expenditure for the consultant. And they requested more information on the eligibility of this, well, they just asked for more information on this. Um, I did some research and, um, there, as far as how they define infrastructure, computer equipment is considered, um, a physical asset. The software is not necessarily considered a durable asset. It's more an intangible asset. So, um, there is some question whether this would be an eligible expenditure. And, um, in my opinion, I think it's prudent for the city to, um, make sure, well, we can use a funding source that we know will not cause us any problems later on. I think it's more important to make sure that purchases that we are doing are eligible and they won't be questioned by the sales tax oversight board. I just think it's prudent and conservative and, um, we would move it from the sales tax fund to the general fund.
Mary, um, and that's twice, is it twice a year or, or every quarter?
Well, they do twice a year. The first in September is to review the budget. And then in April, they ask us to report what we spent the money on. So, it's a review of the expenditures.
At, at the meetings, uh, and I think you, you, I, I know you attended the last one. Uh, do they run down the expenditures of the other municipalities?
Yes.
And, and we've never heard of any, any software or anything like that going through?
Um, actually, when we purchased Edmonds, and that was over ten years ago, um, that purchase was not questioned. I, just from reviewing the old documents, we had purchased hardware and software together. And some of it was administrative costs. So, I don't know if that was the reason or the board just chose to not question the eligibility on that.
Okay, alright.
They didn't actually outright deny it. They just questioned it. And I just did research on my own and...
And you feel comfortable doing it?
I do. I found actually, um, it was a, an opinion by the Attorney General of the State of Florida. And it was quite specific in my opinion. And I know that Sasha has, you know, with her legal background, told me that this is a recommendation. Um, but, their opinion was it's not considered a durable asset or expenditure.
Okay.
So...
That's your opinion? That's good enough for me. Okay.
Tom, I want to speak.
So, I just want to, I want to bring up, um, for discussion, um, we, so this is, uh, basically what this is, is it's, we are moving forward with the replacement of Edmonds. And we, you know, we ha- we use Edmonds quite a bit. We've gotten a lot of feedback from staff. We, we've involved commission, uh, over the years. Uh, but what I want to, what, what Mary is explaining is we can't use, we feel we can't use sales tax funds. And so, what, what we're very specifically asking you for tonight is, um, let's take it out of general fund instead of, uh, sales tax. But, there's a larger question here that we need to ask you. And that is, we think what we've budgeted is insufficient. We have budgeted a million dollars over two years. And that is, now it's from general fund, but it's also from utilities. And we are going to take a look to see if the distribution between general fund and utilities is appropriate. And so, there is more work to do there. But, um, in talking to, um, in talking to consultants, we're not sure if a million dollars is enough. And so, the larger question is, uh, are we committed to replacing Edmonds? And are we willing to do it at something higher? Are we willing to spend one point five, potentially two million dollars on this? And so, the first step tonight is to reallocate what was in the sales tax fund to the general fund. But, then the second item on the agenda is allowing us to go out and hire a consultant at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to take us through this process. And so, the, I guess the larger question to commission is, are, are you comfortable with us replacing Edmonds? And are you comfortable with us doing it at potentially one point five to two million dollars over several years?
Are, are we certain we're going to find something better than Edmonds?
I would, I would say that's, that's what this process is for. Uh, I think if you were to ask certain employees, they would say, we are definitely going to find something better than Edmonds. Um, but I think it's, that's subjective. I think the answer to your question is that's why we do this process. If we were to, so...
I'm, I'm, I guess my question is, is why do we need a consultant to tell us if something's better if we could find out on our own if something's better?
Could I answer that if you don't want to?
Sure.
Well, the consult, and this is the next agenda item.
I know. But, it's all, it's all wrapped together.
It is. And I would like to address, the consultant is not necessarily just to go out and buy software. The consultant will provide a greater service than that. Part of the issue we have isn't just Edmonds. It's the fact that, um, Eustis is a fairly moderate-sized city and all of our departments, even though we are one city, moving in one direction to fulfill our goals here. We do operate independently. And what the consultant would provide to, uh, the city is, it's a two-part process which I'll address in the next. And it's an analysis of all our departments. They interview each department, find out the workflow process, find out where we share, share information, how we integrate with each other to prevent redundancy, to have a, a better process, a way of, um, you know, managing our workflow. And, um, the consultants that we use are specific to government, specifically governments our size. And once they make an evaluation of, they map out all the different processes to streamline things, which I think is sorely needed here.
I agree.
And, um, because the departments are all working really hard. But, I can't tell you, I work in finance. I can't tell you how Rick runs his department. But, all roads do lead to finance ultimately. But, we need to have better communication to, uh, implement processes that are more efficient. So, the first part of the ERP consultant is to take a look at our city globally. And they can make recommendations based on what other cities our size are doing. They have a better perspective than when we have here alone. The second part is, once they evaluate the different processes, they're more familiar with the market that's out there. Poss- the, the vendors that are, the, the products that, the software that we can purchase. But, I think the most valuable, um, um, that we would gain from having, um, a consultant that is knowledgeable in, 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 uh, information technology is because, I know finance, but guess what? When we start talking integration and configuration and API and all that soup, I get lost. And I have seen, we've gone out in other municipalities I've worked at. We spent a lot of time. We have vendors come in and they give their demonstrations and they're going to do this, they can do this, they can do everything. They'll even make lunch for you. But, then, once they get in, then they're like, oh, hm, we didn't know your dad was like that. That's going to be a problem. Now, we have to buy this other thing. It's going to cost you a little more money. Now, we have this working on. And I'm getting a little bit, I'm getting passionate about this.
You are, but you're kind of making my point too. Because I, I worry that we get through all this and it's not really that much better than, than Edmonds.
Exactly. And if we go on the chief, we could end up with that.
And, and then my second question is, is since we knew, we knew this expense was, looks like almost a million dollars, did we have that discussion with sales tax before we, we went out and, and tried to get this accomplished? So...
No, we budgeted this during the budget process in this meeting on September twenty-ninth. The budget was already approved on the eighteenth.
Okay.
Do we compensate in that for the loss of commercial sales tax and how that's going to impact the monies we get this year? Did you guys take a look at that or put a factor in there?
No, I didn't factor in how much money we're going to receive from the sales tax.
Or that you would, there will be a...
Or that you would, there will be a drop, I guess, obviously you know that, right?
I don't think, from the estimates that we got from the state, there was a, a small drop, but I didn't think it was very significant.
It's extremely significant, but.
Well, this is based on what we got from the state and that was in end of July, beginning of August.
Okay.
Any other questions from Ms. Lee Sin?
Do we have? So I, I, so again, I ask the fundamental question. Theoretically, we could move forward with not this item, but the second, we would, we would need to move forward with this in order to move forward with the second item. The, I guess the question, we could hire the consultant, have them do work for us, and the determine that we don't wanna move forward. We would have spent that consulting money at that point. So by moving forward with the consultant, we're not committing to the new software. We're committing to the consulting work to lead us through that process. Um, but I, again, I, I, I just want commission to know that this is a major undertaking and we, it's a multi-year process and it's going to be an expensive process.
Well, but we, but initially we were hoping all of this is gonna be paid out of Sales Tax, correct?
Well, it was gonna be a combination of Sales Tax and Utility Funds.
But it, um, but did we have that conversation with Sales Tax to see if this would be something they would consider approving before we, we went down the road? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Uh, no, we didn't have that, because we were operating from the assumption they approved Edmonds over ten years ago.
Yeah, but.
We didn't anticipate it being issued.
But we all, I mean.
When we questioned it, then I started doing deep research into it, so.
Thank you.
What will happen if we keep Edmonds?
Well, um, I guess the, the consultant would actually look at what Edmonds currently has to offer as well. And there's, there's a possibility that they could say, yep, well, Edmonds may be sufficient. Um, Edmonds is always, they're making enhancements to their products as well. So they have, have made some, um, improvements to, um, they have added like a dashboard and there's things to that we can streamline some of the processes. So it's, it is quite possible that they can say, yes, Edmonds is a viable solution for you.
Does Edmonds have the ability to build a suit?
Um.
They, they, they have add-ons, right? Correct?
Yes, they do. Yeah, we could, yeah, they do have multiple modules that they.
They'll come in and provide training as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
How do you feel about Edmonds?
I, you know, it's always a learning curve, so it took me a, a, a beat to get up to speed on Edmonds. I think it works, there are a number of things that I think are real limitations. Um, part of what we do, and it's, it's just what, um, Commissioner Ashbody was asking. Okay, they, you would like us to, you know, get you all the purchase orders. And I think one of the limitations that we have from Edmonds is that it's, it's pretty rigid. And a lot of times we can't pull data and, you know, massage it in a way that you want. It's, it's cumbersome that way. Uh, one of the biggest we, we all complain about is we can't download it to Excel, so we can't manipulate the data. Um, data is only as good as what we can pull from up and discern what we need, what questions we can answer. And I think, um, Edmonds is, has a little bit of limitation with that.
Sounds like it's limited in being able to communicate with the departments, is that what I heard, other departments?
I think that's, and that was what I was saying, the value of having a consultant, it's a two-part. We need to look at our business processes, not just software. First, we have to evaluate what are, what are our weaknesses, what are our pain points, what can we improve on? And we can, once we identify the issues, where we have redundancy, where things are.
Well, that, that's what the, I'm sorry, that's what the consultant's for there, yeah, yeah.
Right, but that sort of leads to your next question, will Edmonds be able to adjust these, uh, uh, and, um, address these weaknesses? Can they, and I can't really answer that question, and, and that's what we hope to learn from a consultant.
Well, I can, I can say, and Tom, Tom will verify this. I've said for three years, we, we need something better. We need something that all the departments can communicate with. There's gotta be something out there that's, that can bring everyone together, looking at projects, I mean, even just communication, just. But I hesitate of, of, of spending that kinda money on the unknown, so.
You know, as long as I've been up here, Edmonds has been a problem.
Mm-hmm. As long as I've been up here, it's been a challenge, it's antiquated, it's clunky, it is very hard to operate.
So.
I mean, when you get emails constantly telling people to sign out of Edmonds so that somebody can complete work, that's a problem in, in two thousand twenty-five.
Do we have someone who's knowledgeable about these different, uh, options that might be out there without having to spend money on a consultant?
Is, can Bryce, can Bryce give us any insight on this? Nope, not at all?
Um, Bryce has a lot of IT knowledge.
Yeah, I know, okay.
And if we would have a computer conversion, we would have to lean heavily on that because there's so many safety concerns. And I think that's a big part of his, is to keep the city safe. So a lot of times the IT department will come in and provide that aspect. Because we're gonna be, you know, moving data to another system, there's some vulnerability whenever you're, you're moving data from one place. So I think that's just been my experience in the past, IT is coming in to make sure the firewalls are there, to make sure that the product we're buying, um, has enough, um, controls.
Yeah, no, you're, you're correct. We, you know, that is, is, it is all, uh, it's about nowadays and we, we should be able to, to, to pull data what we, what we need. I am, I mean, for me, I'm, I'm okay doing a consultant, but I'm not sure about the rest of it right now, just my opinion.
So if we, if we did the consultant at the, and the consultant would take what, two to three years?
No, I think about six months.
Six months?
Six to nine.
So, so we can revisit this in six months?
That's, that's what I, that'd be my opinion.
Yeah, revisit in six months.
So, so the consultant was at what, one twenty-seven thousand?
One thirty.
One thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and about twelve thousand is an estimate of travel costs, because they will actually come here, need in person.
Oh, in addition to the one thirty, twelve thousand and?
No, it's one twenty-five plus twelve.
Twelve thousand travel costs.
Mr. Mayor, I have been in touch with Lake County, um, as far as the determination for the ta, Sales Tax use for this. Because it is an old statute and software has moved a lot from ownership versus subscription. That is, you know, part of all of this, so, um, they ha, they are open to, if I can provide viable legal opinion, you know, that they can present. Um, they will revisit it, they've asked for additional information on that, but right now, what, what we have and where we stand today, for purposes of the consultant, this is the avenue that we have, but, um, this, the opportunity of, you know, possibly recouping some of this is still there. If, if, um, you know, with time, I can, uh, provide that opinion to them and I'll let you all know.
Yeah, Sasha, that, that's a very good point, if they're open to that, because we are, finance is governed by the Government Economy Standards Board. And to, to, this is our third year now, they call, it's called subscription-based information technology.
Mm-hmm.
So everything that we buy, we're required to capitalize it as, as an asset. So if we're gonna be consistent with the Government Economy Standards Board, it, it follows suit, that they would recognize that and allow us to use that as an industrial asset. I mean, this is a world we've moved to, and, um, that would be great, we could provide all kinds of, uh, supporting documents for that.
So I, I will be working on that. I mean, they're not gonna do it for us, obviously, so we have to make our case and, um, and see if that's, it's possible to recoup a, a good amount of that.
Have we, um, con, looked at or talked to, spoken to the county, what are they using, or Maldora or Claremont or something, what they're using, if they're happy with it?
I, I haven't pulled other, um, communities for that, no.
Okay.
Okay.
And, Tom, did you clarify, is it possible to just hire the consultant without moving the funds or does that, is that tied together?
I, if we're going to go back after the fact and request, I, I guess my question would be, we, we are, tonight, the first item is to move the money from the, we are not planning to use Sales Tax Fund, we're planning to use General Fund, that's the first item. Um, I don't know if you feel there's an opportu, I, if we hold it up, if we hold up the first item, then we can't hire the consultants. And so I don't think we wanna hold up hiring the consultants, and my question would be, can we allocate it to the General Fund? And then after the fact, go back and say, we'd like to use this as an eligible Sales Tax expense?
Well, they need proof, and I don't know that, I, it, there's no guarantee, so I don't wanna hold it up on that, because based on my initial discussion, uh, we were heading towards, no, this isn't eligible. They, they wanted something further, more concrete, so that involves more time and, 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 you know, delving into the legal world.
And I guess one thing I'd like to add to that, because if we're gonna do these as two separate purchases, that may cause us, um, an issue. Because if we just use this as a consulting fee, that clearly falls in as an operating expense and that's disallowed, I mean, by the statute. It, it has to be for capital expenditures with estimated life of within five years. If we would say that the consultant is part of this bigger project, we could make a case that it's a capital expenditure. But if we're gonna do them in two different pieces, I think that would be harder to make that case for capital.
So I, I think what we're gonna ask for is approval of both twenty-five ninety-four and twenty-five ninety-five. Is that right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, we're with twenty-five ninety-four now. Um, do we have any cards on this item, Tom?
I, I wanted to say something, Sasha, I hadn't, um.
Yeah, sure. But we still, I just need to get public input as well, so I can, before, after, it's fine.
Discussion go first or public input?
Public input, and then we can have discussion. Any cards?
Yep.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-four? Okay, seeing none, I will close public input. Back to you, Mr. Mayor, for discussion.
Discussion, George?
This is a perfect example of what we spent forty minutes about, sorry, but it is. There are priorities. When I came here and I sat with Lori, I asked her, what's the one thing you really need to do your job better? And she had said updating this, Edmonds. She, and, and that stuck in my mind. On the other hand, when I sat with Parks and Recs, I asked him, what's the one thing you want? And he said a master plan. And, and he's been adamant about, about that. And our job, this is trying to diffuse some of the tension from a little bit earlier. Our job, tough job sometimes, is to make the decision as to which one, and they're hard. We, we wanna give both of them, we wanna give everything if we can, especially to staff. So there's four point four eight billion dropping out of the Sales Tax from the commercial, uh, that, that we talked about. So I looked it up while we were sitting here, it's four point four eight million. If the homestead goes away, which is a compromise they're saying in Tallahassee, for you with just your homestead, it's gonna drop another fifteen, almost fifteen billion, they're expecting. That's gonna take a lot of money out of our Sales Tax stuff. We gotta start thinking about what happens when the kids go to college and where our money and everything is going. But that's what I wanna have some of those discussions about those items. Uh, but, uh, I'm torn, would I rather see it go to Parks and Recs for our children? Yeah, I think our children are more important than software that's working. But then our staff is just as important to efficiently do their work and give us, so it's torn between two lovers kinda thing. So, uh, I wanted to make a point, I hope I made it and, and, uh, okay.
But shouldn't, shouldn't we wait until we get the, the Sales Tax, uh, decision?
There's no guarantee that it'll be, um, favorable, just based on the initial, like I said, discussion that I had with, um, the county, uh, the AG opinion that we reviewed, so I'd, we'd have to find something that would substantiate that in a way that would convince, um, convince that board. And I'm happy to do, do that, but I, I don't know that we're gonna be able to hold off on this in order for that to happen, and we may not get a yes. Because Mary would have to go back.
And Mike, just 'cause I know you know that stuff, it would be March thirtieth, twenty-sixth, something like that. By the time we know we're Sales Tax, Property Tax, we'll know where we really are. So otherwise, we're spending money we don't know if we're gonna get.
Correct.
Uh, so comments, for me, and, and maybe I'm too conservative, is I don't wanna count my chickens before my eggs hatch as well.
Chicken?
Count my chickens, yeah.
Okay, Emily?
That was, I didn't even tell that, she caught it.
I guess, um, since we've been hearing so much about the lack of in Edmonds, obviously something needs to be done. I think we're sitting here making requests about, we want this information, that information, and they're limited in what they can provide for us. Something needs to be done, um. I would like to have heard that some questions had been asked of other cities, other places, what they have, and if they, if they like what they're doing, if it's effective for them. I didn't hear that, but I do think we need to do something about the current situation.
If I'm not mistaken, when Lori and Mary came over, uh, the system that you all had prior to coming here was better than what you have now. Better than Edmonds. I think I recall that, is that?
Unfortunately, I think, Mary and I both come from the same system through different avenues that is, that was the Cadillac system.
Mm-hmm.
Bigger entities, they had the money, um, we know all the bells and whistles, but we know we don't need that all. Wish list, absolutely need, no, but we do need things like the ability to search and wildcards and parameters on reports, which we don't have right now. And just because some other city has something doesn't mean it's the solution for us. And a perfect example of that is that, um, I, I speak to the Finance Director at Umatilla now, and then, and they went from Edmonds to Munis, which is, was the Cadillac of all the systems. And she's actually going back to Edmonds for their, I believe it's code, because it's just not working. And I have been hearing bad things about Munis lately, and I did go through an implementation, um, with them six years ago, where I knew more than their implementer did. Because they, they sent people that didn't understand accounting. And the people, especially on this consulting team, we have somebody who has been an accountant with the city for fifteen years doing implementations. So they'll know the questions to ask us. And when we go to our conferences, there's probably at least twenty different softwares out there. And to take the time and evaluate all of those is just not the luxury that we have ourselves.
But, but the consultant could do that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you know.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I mean, it's obvious we have to do something, but being a consultant or whatever, we have to move, we have to help them.
Mike?
I move approval of Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-four.
Gary?
Hey, man, motion.
Okay, oh, okay. Actually, we'd get a little discussion, okay.
We had discussion, that's what's it.
It's been first, okay.
So we need a second for discussion?
Well, we already discussed, but.
Oh, okay, second.
Okay, it's been moved, moved and properly second, roll call.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashbody?
My concern is, we're not gonna, may not have the money, but I think it's something they need.
Yeah.
I don't think we have enough information, I'd say no at this time.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
The accompanying resolution to that is Resolution number twenty-five dash ninety-five, a resolution of the City Commission of the Eustis, City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, approving a purchase in excess of a hundred thousand dollars and entering into an agreement with Barry, Dunn, McNeil, and Parker LLC for Enterprise Resource Planning Advisory Services. Is there anything further you would like to say on that, Ms. Lee Sin, or?
If you have any questions, we'll have it.
Any questions from the Commission from Ms. Lee Sin on this one? Do we have any cards, Tom? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-five? Seeing none, I will close public input. I'll give it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, for us, uh, we have twenty-five dash ninety-five.
Move approval.
Approval? Approval? Does anyone want a second?
Is that the one for three hundred seventy-five thousand?
This is the one thirty-seven.
One thirty-seven.
One twenty-five plus twelve thousand in travel costs.
I, I truthfully, I, I make the motion, I don't wanna hire a consultant. I hate hiring consultants constantly. But the problem we have is, like they say, you go to a, a conference.
Yeah.
And there's sixty different people. We go to the League of Cities and we watch these same people. And you see how many are out there. We don't have the ability to go out and find what's best for us. Staff time is not gonna allow that to happen, because we have a broke system as it is. I don't know how else we find a better system. That's, that's the problem we have.
The issue I have with is the twelve thousand travel. If this is their job, then they should be.
I think the concern is, where are we gonna be in the global financial of what we have? What are we gonna do for Parks and Recs? What are we gonna do for the building that the library wants? We have to pick our priorities. It's a tough, it's a tough move.
And that's why we asked them to come back with some stuff at the end, and we're gonna, we're gonna end up axing some stuff probably right off.
Can we just have a, um, parking rat master plan done? What was it that?
We shot it down.
No, no, they just did something.
The Carver Park Master Plan was done. We have not presented it to you because there are so many moving parts. Other facilities, other properties, and so.
Yeah.
Um, we, we have not presented the Carver Park Master Plan to you.
And I'm sure if, I'm sure if he came up, he would give us a very compelling argument about our children in the future.
Yeah.
And I'm sure if Ann came forward, she would give us an extremely great compelling. She's got a phenomenal program out there. I never imagined how great it was. So where are we at? And sales tax is going down. Should we maybe visit it March thirty-first, when we know how much we're getting?
Well, the other part to it.
And pick our, pick our priorities, sorry.
But all, all of these entities are dependent upon what they do. And, and pours into Edmonds and any other, um, project that they may, I mean, um, service that they need.
Absolutely affects them. But it's like asking the police chief, do you want a car that's this or that? Do you want a taser that's better or, or worse, that can help him? And, and the library, there's things we can do for her to help her job quite a bit. And our children, it's all the same. It's a, it's, I sympathize with them. I, I actually really do. It, but where are we?
Did you want a second, Ms., uh, Mr. Mayor, for further discussion?
You want a second for further discussion?
For further discussion?
Yes.
You can continue.
All right. Let's. That's where we're at. March thirty-first, we'll know how much sales tax money we have, if nothing, or if the whole city is a major, major issue.
Okay. Um, it's been moved and properly second. Roll call?
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbady?
No.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Next, we have resolution number twenty-five dash one hundred. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eastlake, Florida, approving and authorizing the. Okay, approving and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of real property. Located at two hundred South Bay Street and related parcels. Finding a valid public purpose, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement. Providing for implementation and providing for an effective date. Tom?
Yes, uh, so what you have before you is a purchase and sale agreement for a property commonly known as the Bank of America Building. Uh, but it also includes the drive-through property, so it is, uh, two non-contiguous properties. Um, the, uh, we've been working, uh, for some time to negotiate, uh, with the sellers. And so what we have, uh, arrived at is a purchase agreement for one point eight million. With the caveat, uh, because they had been asking, uh, they said that, um, they really wanted the number to start with a two. And we said, well, we're, we're willing to offer one point eight. Uh, with the caveat that, uh, we are required by law to get two MAI appraisals. And so there is a caveat that, uh, if those MAI appraisals come back at a average of above one point eight. Uh, we will offer that amount above one point eight, and Sasha has included some language. That depending on what it comes back at, the approval process is, uh, slightly different. However, um, we, we, the base amount we've agreed to is the one point eight. Um, and, uh, so the, what are the plans for the buildings? Um, we cannot use, uh, CRA funds for administrative offices. And short-term, uh, our use of the building proposed would be for administrative offices. Initially, we're proposing that, uh, this building would be the new home of the building department. And fire admin, um, the leadership of the fire department. And then we would see what other operations make sense there. Uh, as such, uh, we can't use CRA funds, but we can use building department funds. And so in talking to the building department and finance, um, the building department will entirely fund the purchase price of one point eight million. And then, um, the building department and the sales tax fund, um, will fund renovations. Uh, because there will be some renovations involved. Um, so, uh, the, the purchase will be fully funded by the building department with renovations funded by the building department. And then we had budgeted some money in the sales tax fund for fire department admin. Uh, and so that will also be available for renovations. Um, and then down the road, the real value is the site as a redevelopment site. And so at, down the road, uh, there is an opportunity for the CRA to buy out the building department. In effect, the building department is buying the building, but down the road, the CRA can purchase the site as a redevelopment site. And as far as when will that happen, that's, it's down the road. It could be five years, it could be ten years. And so what we're proposing is this purchase agreement. Uh, we do have ninety days for due diligence, uh, so we will be doing things like environmental work, geotechnical work. And we're required to get the two MAI appraisals. And so, uh, if you have any specific questions about the purchase agreement, Sasha and I, uh, will try to answer those. But again, uh, initial use will be as a relief for City Hall, uh, because we're busting at the seams here at City Hall. Uh, as administrative offices, and then down the road, it will be a redevelopment site. Be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
How long are you, uh, thinking it would be used for, uh, building and fire?
Uh, I, again, we're ballpark, I think we're saying five to ten years. It, it would need to be long enough where the investment in renovations makes sense.
What it, have you done an evaluation of the renovations and what their cost would be?
We've done some very preliminary work, but that'll be part of the due diligence, uh, over the next ninety days. We're confident that it needs a new roof. Um, we know it needs things like new carpeting and painting and, uh, but we need to get in there. We need to do a more serious evaluation. And, uh, we're poised with, uh, the building department and, uh, engineering to do a more serious evaluation. And then put together a renovation plan.
But we're buying it as is, right?
Yes.
So we have to pay for the roof and, uh, all of that, so that's. What's a roof on that, uh, have you figured out what a roof on that is? Three fifty, four hundred, four hundred fifty grand?
We, we know that we have to, we know that we have to rent a crane and we have to pull all the units off the roof. And scrape four or five layers of roofing material and who knows what kind of substructure work, and so we, we don't know yet.
So, we're gonna, the fire department and the building department, how many, about how much of that building are they gonna occupy?
I think we need to figure that out, uh, meaning.
Ten percent of the building that'll occupy?
Uh, I think maybe slightly more than that.
So we'll have ninety percent vacant? Building?
Well, there are other opportunities too, uh, as far as other, other operations and departments, um, that we just haven't explored yet.
What size is City Hall here, where we're at? How many square foot is this about?
I don't know if I know off the top of my head.
Does fourteen thousand two hundred and forty sound about right?
Uh, that sounds very specific.
So we're gonna double our square footage and carrying costs and in overhead. Put a roof on, do carpeting, paint. In a building we're gonna knock down.
Uh, I, over time, yes, it will be knocked down. I would say that, again, the value is in a redevelopment.
And I think it's a hundred, that breaks down at eighteen, uh, one point eight breaks down to a hundred and sixteen dollars a square foot. And the, uh, the, uh, property appraiser though generally is low, has it valued at nine hundred and thirty thousand. Will lose our sales tax, uh, property tax on it. And it will be, uh, don't hold me to it, but it will be the most expensive building per square foot. Above fifteen thousand square foot ever sold. And I think the building right behind us just sold for eighty some bucks a square foot. So we're paying nearly fifty percent more for a building as is. With a bad roof, bad air conditioning, um, a safe, an entire safe system. We have to demo that out.
I would say that would stay for now, and it would have to go as part of a redevelopment.
Okay, and we'll utilize roughly ten percent, leave ninety percent vacant.
Do we have to do anything to the other parcel for upkeep or maintenance?
The other parcel has a bad roof too. The air conditioner was stolen. The windows were broken, they're boarded up. Um, it's parking. Give you some parking spaces, but you're still paying as an overall quite a bit.
Tom, does the building department, do they have to spend? They have to spend their money? Is, is there some things set aside where they have to spend?
The building department, um. They, they are going to need additional space, whether it's, uh, build a building, buy a building. Uh, the building department, uh, needs additional space. Uh, and they, um, the building department fund, we have set aside funds, uh, for that capital expense. Whether it's a purchase or a renovation. So, uh, yes, they, uh, the building department has set aside money specifically for that purpose.
Can the building department pay for all the carrying costs and operating on it? Pay for a hundred percent of it with their occupancy of maybe, if it's half of that ten, five percent?
Yes.
They can pay for something that's vacant and not being used?
Yes, I mean, there can be arrangements where, uh, another user could potentially pay rent to the building department. Uh, but the building department also incurs costs here at the city. Um, auditing, um, you know, the various services that the city offers the building department. And so there could potentially be money going from the building department to the general fund and from the general fund to the building department.
Do, do we foresee any other projects coming up that, that the building department would be a part of? If we, we have our workshop with Dr. Levy and he suggests some things, do, do we foresee anything that they could help us with after, after we speak to him?
I would say that if you're asking if there are other real estate opportunities, I would say. The building department probably wouldn't be involved, but the CRA and the general fund could potentially be involved. Whether that's sites like Crazy Gator or the Helipad Site or others.
You know, I can't help but come to mind what, uh, the mayor said, and I think it was our last meeting when we were talking about the RFP going out and everything. And, uh, I was favorable to have that RFP go out and, um, the mayor said, I think we should, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. But that we should wait until we get in front of Levy and decide what we're doing. That might not be a bad thing to do here as well, to be consistent in what we're doing, not saying no. But, uh, I also think there's a room to work with on that price. Absolutely. And carrying a building with five, ten percent occupancy, um, in a descending market. That building's been for sale for twelve years. And another suggestion, if I may, since, um, I'm on a roll. Um, did we, should we consider looking at any other properties that we have to give relief to staff? Uh, a thought came to my mind, we were gonna trade, uh, Women's Club. Can we take some of this renovation money, way less than what we're gonna spend in that building? And perhaps make offices in the Women's Center? And, uh, relieve the stress that we have as we work on our global, um, revitalization of all of downtown. And, uh, I'm not against continuing to work with these people, but this property hasn't sold in twelve years for some reason. Uh, it's way over market. And it has a bad roof, it has all these other things. We're paying way too much.
I have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
One, I noticed that it said that if, um, if the appraisal comes back, then we could, may have to go up to, to two million. So if the appraisal comes back and is lower, why aren't we lowering the price? Also, I mean, like, if they're gonna go up, then we should better come down. And, um, so I was wondering, um, also if the seller, would he not? Could we not ask, like, that you repair the roof or help with the, um, repair costs, anything like that?
Uh, so the, I mean, the seller and, and the seller has said they're not going to accept less than one point eight. Um, of course, they would say that. Um, so, um, there is no provision for renegotiating the purchase price. That said, if we do our due diligence and we're not comfortable moving forward, then we don't move forward.
Any thoughts on the Women's Center, that idea I just threw out, you? To take, uh, take that and hold on to that. I don't know, by the time we're done with all these improvements and everything in there, we're probably gonna be pushing two point five million, is my guess.
You know, with the Women's Center.
Yeah.
The community is already strapped with places to go. Taking the, the, the Women's Club puts us down to just one, one space, and that's Community Center. They're both booked.
We have some more spaces, we just have to make some tough decisions if we do. Can we do, can we find relief for less than two point five, two point seven million?
Could we build something cheaper?
Yes.
I, I believe we could.
Absolutely guaranteed, you could, where's Daniel? I don't wanna hear from him anyway. But you can build something for cheaper out of pocket, brand spanking new. Without wood frame, without termite damage, without water damage.
Mike? Discussion?
I'd like to see us go back and negotiate with them more.
The building is rotting down there, unfortunately. Um, we need the. We need the property. We don't need the building. I mean, like George said, it's been for sale for a long time. The Community Center, regardless of what we do, it's gonna have to come down. E- even if we real build another Community Center, I don't want the Women's Club touched. Because we're gonna have to have that to provide services for our community at the end of the day. Because no matter what happens at that Community Center, it's too small. Okay? Whether we turn it over to a, a outside investment company to build something there, or whether we do it ourselves. The building's gonna have to be done something with. We have been band-aiding that building and band-aiding that building for too long. Right now, we've got a roof that's, truthfully, it's, it's, it's shot. So. I think this is one of those things that we do need to wait till we talk to Dr. Levy. We get a game plan as a commission. I know he's talked to every one of us now. He's gonna be back in front of us when, Tom?
About the twelfth.
Twelfth.
The twelfth of December. I think, I mean, we've got a little bit of time there. Let's talk to Dr. Levy and see what kind of page he put us all on, and then go from there. I think we ought to control that piece of property at the end of the day. Isn't it too high of a cost right now? When you look at the national economy and our local economy, it may be. So, I, I think it's worth us waiting to see what Dr. Levy has to say, if he's able to pull us onto the same page. For a downtown master plan, and then we make a decision after that. Just my thoughts at this point.
Emily?
I agree. Um, I still have some issues. I feel like the negotiating down should happen. I think that we should get more out of the seller. And I, I agree, I really, really, really think we need to, when we have our meeting on the twel- And I, I agree, I really, really, really think we need to, when we have our meeting on the twelfth. I have so much hope that it will help us create the vision that we need. And that, and, uh, help us see a way to do this and. Figure out what is more important and where we should put things and all of that. So that's important to me and I'm, I'm really hopeful. That it'll give us that opportunity to be able to do that. And in the meantime, I don't know if we're continuing, they have a ninety day. Um, agreement, right, to process through this.
This, I mean, this agreement would have a ninety day due diligence period.
So you could pull out, so you could, if you don't wanna do it, you don't.
Well, I don't. The, if we s- if we sign this agreement, we would be committing to the one point eight million dollar purchase price. Which of course would not, we would not pay if we walked away. I guess what I'm saying is that if we, if we agree to this tonight, we then have ninety days to do our due diligence. But it doesn't, we don't have an opportunity to renegotiate purchase price. I mean Sasha is that.
And we would have to give them a ninety thousand dollar.
So, the deposit is.
Explain. I was heavily involved in drafting this contract from what was initially provided to what you're seeing before you now. Um, to build in all the munis- uh, municipal protections, make sure it conformed with the statute that the public purpose is being protected. And that's why it's tied to the appraisal. Now, um, I was not involved in negotiating this. But I was involved as far as the, uh, contract itself. So the city has, um, a way out. It's essentially a hundred percent up until the, uh, ninety day, um, due diligence period. Which can be extended by thirty days if both parties agree with, uh, Tom approving that, but. During that time period, if we just do not find that the property is fit for our purposes as far as the city, we can walk away. And that's that, um, and recover our deposit. If. Uh, we do want the property, it doesn't fail, um, any kind of, um. I guess phase two environmental, there will be costs incurred by the city, of course, obviously, in doing the due diligence and getting the appraisals, that's cost that you. Are basically authorizing, um, uh, to go forward by approving the agreement. The, um, that's, that's the time that we would have to look at that. If there are title issues that we. There are certain contingencies, title, um, environmental is one of them and. I believe there's one more, uh, that would allow us to get out of that, um, if the seller isn't going to, uh, correct that. Once we get the appraisals back, the way this is structured is if, if the average of the appraisals exceeds one point eight. They would get an upward price adjustment up to two million. That would be the absolute max that would be paid by the city. If it comes back as less than one point eight, but it's within that ten percent threshold, which puts us between. Re- really puts us at about one point six two. Um, the city may elect in its sole discretion to proceed with that number. Um, at the price of the one point eight without any additional commission action. And, uh. My understanding is that the value of the additional parcels is what's playing a role into the one point eight price commitment. Um, now if it comes back anywhere below that, uh, ten percent to twenty percent. Uh, which means anything be- between one point four and one point six two, that has to come back to you for approval because then. That price would not necessarily confirm that it's a valid public purpose and, and. Uh, you would need to, um, give it your blessing at that point. Anything below that. Cannot, um, proceed without you voting and that would require extraordinary vote, meaning. Four of you would have to say yes to a price, um, if the appraisal comes back to. Comes back, uh, under one point four four. For the one point eight to be approved. Four of you would have to allow, allow that. And again, it's, it's because of what Tom's been saying, I, my understanding is the redevelopment value, the location of the property, all of these things. That's what played a role into kind of making one point eight the bottom line, based on the negotiations that have taken place, um. The max of, but again, tied to the appraisal. Because we also have to justify it based on the statutory requirements. So, there are a lot of contingencies built in to protect the city, um.
I think I wanna, I wanna say one more thing. I, I, I know, I think every one of us owns investment property. You cannot look at this as a one point eight or even two million dollar transaction. And Gary could probably tell you that as a mortgage broker. You have to look at this. As a one point eight or two million plus the roof, plus the renovations to bring it to at least average. Condition or better. And if we do, we're now at a hundred and, I just did the math, a hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot. Nearly twice is what my favorite thing's just sold for behind us. That's how out there it is. And that's why it sat for twelve years and before that, it sat forever as well. So. I think we're in the r- right seat. Yeah, I agree with Mike. If we can get that property for a fair price. And even a hair maybe, you know, on the higher scope of the fair price, we should get it. But to pay double that and to occupy ten percent, I'm not sure that's public.
So you did the contract, who, the government, who, who negotiated the price?
Yes, I had, I did not negotiate the contract. I structured the contract based on. The municipal protections because it was initially more of like a private purchase, which is not applicable to public property purchases. So, um, we were, we had some back and forth, but. It was built to conform with the law and, and make it so that at some point if. You don't find the valid public purpose, which would be tied to the, the appraisal value because that is required by statute, then. It would require that extraordinary vote. So I'm just giving information as far as how the contract was structured. Um, that is up to you as far as what you decide tonight, but.
Percentage of occupancy relative to, to that public value? Can you say it's a public value when you're only occupying ten percent, five percent, fifteen percent, whatever? Does it become a, a, a gray area there?
Occupancy is, is not a factor in and of itself when it comes to public purpose, it's like what Tom was talking about, the, we. Um, redevelopment value, the location of the property, what the city could do in the future. If you don't, you know, this is all up to you, um, if you do not think that.
But we're not committing to that now. We're not committing to five years and definitely knocking it down five years and going, right? We're saying we might. Are we willing to, are you willing to commit that at five years, the building's going down and?
Can, can, can we wait till after the twelfth to, to, to negotiate this?
I, I mean, I agree with Michael, Emily, I totally agree with you. There's no harm in us waiting, so I just think we need to.
We are meeting with Dr. Levy's in twenty-two days.
Right, yeah, it's not. But doing this tonight, it, it, we still get to move forward. So, we're not losing anything. We don't, we don't, uh, the only thing we're losing is the cost to go in and, and do our due diligence.
When you set a tone. For where you're at, it is very hard to come back from that tone. You've done enough that I think that might. Be something you should consider.
Well, if the plan is to walk away, uh, tonight, we can walk away in three months and still have the work done.
I think the plan that, that I'm hearing here is that we wait for Dr. Levy to look at a global for us. And I'm suggesting that we. Also try to negotiate more with them. We cannot pay a hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot for a building that's a disaster.
Okay, let's take a vote, please.
Oh, wait, one second. We need, uh, public input, no, not yet. Have you had a question?
Public input first.
But, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to make sure, I knew that we had nothing public.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Are we, no cards, okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Ma'am, if you could come up? You'll have just three minutes and if you can state your name and if you're a resident.
Chris Getchel, I'm a permanent resident of Eustis for seventy-one years. Please don't bring up to ever get rid of any more historical buildings in Eustis. Uh, that's the only thing that ticks us old timers off. I believe the Women's Club is on the National Historical Society. You can't do anything to that building except the inside, but you have to have permission. You wanna preserve the city of Eustis, so ca- quit destroying the history of this town. I understand what everybody's upset about. The city at Orange and Bay Street has been flooding since I was a little girl. When my mother was a little girl, who only left Eustis to go to college in finance, she's an accountant. It's a problem we've had for years. We're beating a dead horse. It's gonna get fixed one day and then we're not gonna have nothing to bitch about. So let's just look forward. Do I agree with one point eight million for that rundown Barnett Bank? No, I don't. So let's think about it. Let's make Eustis better and keep, keep trying to destroy it. Let's work together as a unity for the better of Eustis, Florida. I wanna be proud of my commission, I am proud of my commission, but sometimes y'all really tick off the people. That really give a damn about Eustis. And I'm standing as one of them. It's my hometown. I have a historical attachment to this town. Let's make it better. Let's all just get on the same page. And let's not fight. We're grownups. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Just your name and.
Windheim, unincorporated, Lake County. I just wanna say I agree with you, George. Uh, one point eight million is way too much for that building. There is no way. I don't know how much the appraisals you guys are gonna spend on that. But if you're looking to just need ten percent for your overflow in your building department, why not the senior center? You guys currently are leasing that out. That's your building you already own. Why don't you move stuff over there? Use that ten percent there. It's already something you have. Move the lease out. Use what you have that's available to you. One point eight million is not acceptable. It's, like you said, it's double what it should be. If not more. And then you have all the cost of renovations, absolutely. I don't think it's a good idea. Senior Center, think about that.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing that, I will close public input. Uh, Mr. Ma'am, giving it back to you if you're going to either be voting or discussing tableing the item, just.
Okay, uh, Mike? Can we get a vote?
My motion would be to table this until after our meeting with Dr. Levy on the twelfth.
Second, okay. It's been moved improperly second.
Commissioner Holland? Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbadi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor's eight o'clock, did you wanna take a break or pull the commission?
Let's take a five minute. Sorry. The time is 8:08.
Almost there.
Okay.
Alright.
Yeah, well, no, you can have both. I have my copy of agenda. I made one.
No, I'm okay with that.
For second readings, we have ordinance numbers 25-31, 32, and 33. Mr. Lee will be presenting on these items. The first reading took place on September 18th, and it was advertised to have a second reading on the 23rd of October. However, at the applicant's request, it was moved to the date certain of tonight's meeting, November 20th, to allow for a community meeting to take place on October 30th. We'll start with ordinance number 25-31. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida, voluntarily annexing approximately 20 acres of real property at alternate key numbers 1743320 and 1407940 on the north side of County Road 44, east of Sparrow Lane. Mr. Lee?
Good evening, Commissioners. I just, uh, I probably need to go and provide a little background before we move into these ordinances. We actually have two or three other annexation, future land use, and design district projects in the wings. But we've four, I guess, stalled those other, I guess, applicants for the meantime. For those who don't know, you know, the, all the local governments in Florida have to review their comprehensive plans every seven years. And during that process, well, the process is called the year process. It's an evaluation and appraisal review of the comprehensive plan. So every seven years, we have been doing that since the Growth Management Act was passed. I know that the city in the past, they had, they did these amendments in 2003, 2010, 2017. Last year, it was supposed to have been done, it was due in '24. The law, the law does allow you to seek an extension. And at that point, we asked for 2025 to be our actual amendment year. The interesting thing this year, you know, we've been working on the, I guess, the data and analysis is really the bulk of the year. But the really interesting thing is Senate Bill 180. I mean, it has really created a lot of confusion, even at the state level. So when I say the local governments, that they deal with the year, it is actually through the Department of Commerce. Throughout my presentation, you may hear me say the state. You may hear me say Florida Commerce, or even Tallahassee. You know, they're all one and the same to us in the planning world. So any rate, we, as I said, we started with our extension last year. And October 28th was actually the due date for the city's year this year. We have been working with our consultant, Design West Group. These guys are actually former employees with the Department of, or I should say Florida Commerce. It seems like every other governor decides to change it something else. It used to be DCA, and occasionally I'll slip and say DCA. But again, currently it is the Florida Commerce. So in essence, the process requires at least two hearings. One is an adoption hearing of the amendment. And technically, when the commission transmits to Tallahassee, or transmits to the department, they will review it and they will sit on it for a while and analyze it. It's, right now with the Senate Bill 180, that's what's creating so much confusion across the state with a lot of different entities. Because with 180, the Department of Commerce is really having a tough time approving a lot of people's ears or their evaluation and appraisal report amendments. But nevertheless, we're going to be bringing forward our year amendment to you guys in December, at your December meeting, December 9th. So any rate, I did want to just kind of share that with you. And that's kind of been the holdup of some of the other annexation requests. So any rate, the impact on tonight is that the annexation certainly can happen. It can be adopted and become effective. And, you know, that's really the only thing that actually becomes effective with this particular ordinance. The future land use and the design districts can be adopted, but they just won't be effective until after the actual appraisal has been transmitted and adopted by the state, or by the city, and sent back to the state. So any rate, as I said, the department will be reviewing that after we submit it. And we'll, the transmission to that will have to go and be approved by you guys, and then actually the adoption when it comes back. Very much like a large-scale type of amendment process. Again, the future land use amendment, it's adoptable, but it's just not effective tonight. Basically, you can, we can annex, and we can go through the future land use issues. But, you know, as far as the ordinance right now, 2532, it does state that it shall not become effective until the Florida Commerce guys actually issue us a, I guess, an approval for the year amendment. Now, the future land use of the county will still be in play during this time until, you know, the Department of Commerce agrees to it. So Lake County's comprehensive plan will be basically in effect with this as it moves forward, if adopted by you guys. The design district is very much the same, although the county does not have a design district issue. So at this point, this is certainly something that is, it really doesn't have much impact other than you guys can adopt it tonight. It just will not be effective. So here's what we've explained to the Moss Development folks. Again, the annexation is effective, but the others will not be. And they can proceed with moving forward with each of the ordinances tonight. But at this point, we will look at their project, if they have one in mind. And when they bring it forward, we can talk about preliminary engineering, their surveying, and the conceptual planning. But they cannot submit basically for the actual permits themselves to the city until actually the transmission, the year is adopted. So as I said, the county's comp plan is basically going to be in effect for these properties until then. And it is our understanding that the applicant does understand these type circumstances. So while we were having this issue, we also received a letter from the county. I believe Commissioner Campione, on behalf of the Lake County, did submit a letter. And they did, I believe you guys actually have received copies of that. They do have their concerns, primarily about infrastructure and the actual utilities in that area. They actually talk about, you know, perhaps the city can reach out to the Lake Sumter MPO and to the Florida DOT, and perhaps seek some kind of assistance with the road improvements for both County Road 44 and 452. And again, I think that, I guess, as Sasha and I have talked about, that the fact that the letter or the comments are important because they are part of the intergovernmental coordination process. However, they do not create any legal conditions and on our annexations or the land use decisions. So at the end of the day, the county's letter functions more as an advisory input in the form of policy concerns, not legal-type prerequisites. So again, I'm just gonna do the wave tops on this project. Again, you guys have heard our presentation under the first reading. Again, this is 2531 through 2533. It is 20 acres. It's owned by the Dowd, the Droudi family. The applicants actually are Brett Jones and the Moss Development LLC folks. It is urban low presently. They're trying to seek suburban residential, as well as suburban neighborhood districts. As I said, it is under, or it's south of Lake Yale, actually on the southern side of County Road 44, 52, and north of County Road 44. And actually, it is just north, or just south of the southern boundary there is going to be Grand Island Estates Reserve subdivision. And it actually abuts to its southeastern area. It abuts two industrial-type uses that are in the county. One is Greenwood Truck Repair Service. The other one is Service Trucking, Inc. We have actually looked at the, I guess, the, our GIS maps and recognize that there is no flood zones on the property. Flood zones are really around Lake Yale. Same thing with wetlands. We did look at the recharge area there. It is split in half. It does have zero to four inches annually on half the property. The other half has basically a four-to-eight inch annual type recharge there. The soils are primarily not limited. It does have an area there on the southern portion that does have some limitations there. In our review initially, we recognize this is in the JPA. We do have services that are adequate in that area. We recognize the site is contiguous on the southern side to the city limits. We did provide proper notices on, in the newspaper for, and actually on the site itself. We actually reviewed, heard the last analysis, and I will not go over that analysis, but we did that during the first reading. And so at this point, we actually bring to you guys for consideration the 2531, 2532, and 2533 for your consideration. The applicant is here, if you have questions for them. And at this point, I'm okay.
Did the applicant, was he informed about the amendment before they made application about the annexation?
No, and that was the real question, is we actually were, we were on par to get queued up to bring it forward during October the 28th. It's just that we did have issues at the consultant level, and we were not able to bring it, the year that is.
So how can...
I have the answer to that question. The applicant is aware, they were apprised by Development Services, and I spoke with their counsel. We went over the, essentially, what had transpired and what the options were legally. And they wanted to move forward. We legally can move forward based on just the contingency of waiting till that comp plan gets that approval. They, then they wanted to continue forward with the process. So the ordinance has been amended, and they, just to include that provision that the effective date of that, while you can adopt it today, will not actually, the implementation of it cannot occur until after we have approval from the state. They understand that. So at that point, they will be receiving it, once we get approved, they'll receive a notice of that.
Okay. And that's it. Thank you for that explanation. Is there a chance that the state won't approve or say we need to change it?
At this point, we're, I really have...
I'm just concerned that, you know, we're halfway through the process, and we've told them, you gotta stay now. Even though they weren't given notice about that when they made application.
Well, again, unfortunately, one of the consequences...
I'm just worried about getting sued, is what I'm saying, Mike.
The consequences at the state level is, is that while they're in review, they're not gonna approve anything that comes forward. We can attempt to, but they will kick it back, and we will have to rehear the issues. So, I mean, this is one of these, it's painful every seven years.
I know. I don't, sorry, I don't like the fact that they weren't given notice before they made application that we were going to do this.
Well, the application came in September 18th, or before that. That was our first reading, so I don't know the timing of in between, but they did get...
I mean, how long, how long did we know we were going to be having to do this amendment?
As I said, we've been working on this since June. But again, the 180 is the one who really created the issues about the puzzling, so...
Why was the late being turned in? Is it the year?
Well, you know, as I said, we, our consultant has been really struggling trying to figure out, you know, a, I guess, a good time. I mean, the assumption early on was that 180 would probably be somehow resolved, whether it be through lawsuits or not. And again, we've still got some, I guess, some holes, if you will, and our data and analysis are going to have to be filled before we can actually wrap it up. But again, we will be bringing it forward at that December night meeting to you guys.
Can you ask counsel if they're okay with all of that?
Yeah, I have it in writing. Brett, he was gonna speak. Yeah, we, go ahead. We've spoken multiple times and discussed this opportunity and...
Brett Jones, 700 Oldham Street, Claremont. Mike did a Yoma's job explaining it. It was confusing to listen to him, but I've had this conversation cumulatively an hour, you know, hour and a half with staff and your city attorney, and we're in agreement with exactly what Mike laid out. It sounded confusing. It's not, to me, confusing. I don't think it's confusing your city attorney. I don't think it's confusing to Mike. And that flow chart that he had, that was very helpful and that is accurate. So we're fine with that. Stuff happens. The EAR, I'm a volunteer on the EAR in the City of Groveland.
And your client?
Stuff happens. We're fine.
Your client's okay with it as well?
Yeah, yeah. We, your city attorney did a really good job of saying, like, how can we make this work? And we want to be appropriate in the city and good neighbor and all that, good citizen stuff. So we're very happy with this result.
So the community meeting did happen?
Yes.
Or did not?
It did.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
By the way, this has also been done in other municipalities when there are delays with the year process. So it's not unusual. And, alright, so, did you have a presentation today?
I don't. If you recall, this was our, this was last month that we were here. So if you have any questions, I'm available to you. Nothing has changed. We did have a community meeting. We discussed traffic. We discussed flooding. This was just a few days after the act of God that happened here at the end of October. Those were the main things. I met with several of the neighbors, including some, one of the neighbors, the next-door neighbor, who's the father of a child that I went to elementary school with, that now lives in Wyoming, which was bizarre because I grew up in Claremont. And we talked about the character and nature of the design and the new design standards, which got turned down by the city, how we are agreeing voluntarily by contract to adhere to them, things like that.
And there's a commercial component as part of the development? No.
Hey, everything is for sale if you're making an offer. No, no, I don't think so, yeah.
We have received a development agreement, and I've reviewed the initial draft. We have edits, and they just resent their provisions. So it's in the works, and it'll come back to you in a subsequent meeting. But that development agreement is not contingent on this annexation because, again, they qualify on its own. It's just a matter of if they wanted the certain number of homes that they're looking for, they're voluntarily seeking to apply our new standards. Any questions for Commission, for Brett, or for staff? No? I'll open it up to the public. Do we have any cards?
I do. Cindy Newton.
Cindy Newton, unincorporated, Eustis. I sent an email earlier today. The alt key 1407940 is continuous to Eustis and would be eligible, in my opinion, for the second reading today. But the other alt key, 1743320, is not continuous to Eustis until the other one has been annexed and goes through both readings. So with this process being slowed down anyway, I think it would be prudent to help with protecting Eustis from litigation to start with the first reading after the first parcel is fully annexed, then begin the process with the second. And here is a copy of my email to hard copy it into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and answer that for Commission. That analysis would apply if the parcels were owned by different property owners. We had this come up with the airport annexation back in '23, if you recall. Even though the beneficiaries were essentially the same people, there were two different entities. So we did have to, out of an abundance of caution, split the annexations to allow for one entity to come in first because it was owned by the trust. And then, once that was within the city limits, get the other property processed. In this instance, both properties are owned by the same property owners. And Florida statute does allow for you to unite the properties as long as you have a boundary that attaches to the city, which in this case it does, as long as it's owned by the same owner. And it was advertised as a 20-acre parcel. So all of that was conforming with law. So in this situation, there is no concern legally to address the question that Ms. Newton had. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? You can come up, state your name.
My name is Brenda Kane and I am a homeowner that's right on the edge of this property that everybody is talking about tonight. And we, I was also at the community meeting with Brett and he was very insightful as to what he said. But me being a homeowner living there for twenty-six years on the very south end of this property, where he is talking about where they're going to put the retention area in and how they're going to go about doing it. I still do not feel comfortable with this because after being there for twenty-six years, I've watched that end of the road flood over and over and over again. And on the south end of that property, where they've kind of got like a little bit of a marshland in there. And that marshland sits with water in it all the time. Four fifty-two on that end, it slopes down and goes around. So there's constant flooding, constant hydroplaning. You are definitely going to have a problem with water in this area, no matter what your reports have said. I've lived there for twenty-six years, so I know what happens on this road. And that really needs to be taken into consideration. And I would appreciate it if you all would look at that a little bit more in detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? All right, before I close public input, did you want to hear again from the applicant?
Can Mike respond to her statements?
Or for the applicant?
Not to put Mike on the spot. I've found that local knowledge is usually the best. So we're going to pay attention to what Mrs. Kane said. And your manager, any of your directors can explain, and you know all the steps that we have to go through. So we'll have our engineer, you'll have your engineer, we'll have the reports that USGS and FEMA and all the governmental entities put out. But then we'll have to hire consultants to measure all the things, including what Mrs. Kane said with respect to a marsh and the flow of water and and deal with all that. And not only to the city of Eustace's standards, but to the state standards as dealt with by the Water Management District and other state entities. So I do take that very seriously and so does the the applicant, my client.
Thank you for that, Brett.
Thank you. So I will close public input at this time. Ordinance twenty-five thirty-one, we still have two more readings that I have to go through, but back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We vote?
We have approval of ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-one.
Second. It's been moved in properly second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Next is ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-two, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustace, Lake County, Florida, amending the City of Eustace Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Florida Statute one sixty-three point thirty-one eighty-seven, changing the future land use designation of approximately twenty acres of real property at alternate key numbers one seven four three three two zero and one four zero seven nine four zero on the north side of County Road forty-four, east of Sparrow Lane, from urban low in Lake County to suburban residential in the city of Eustace. We've had presentation. Are there any additional questions for staff or the applicant from commission on this ordinance? Would anyone in the audience like to comment on ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-two? Seeing none, I will close public input. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, we have approval of ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-two.
Second. It's been moved in properly second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
And the last ordinance is ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustace, Lake County, Florida, assigning the suburban neighborhood design district designation to approximately twenty acres of real property at alternate key numbers one seven four three three two zero and one four zero seven nine four zero on the north side of County Road forty-four, east of Sparrow Lane. We've had presentation. Does commission have any questions for Mike or the applicant? Would anyone in the audience like to speak on ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-three? Seeing none, I will close public input. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, we have approval of ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-three.
Second. Been moving properly second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're supposed to come back to resolution twenty-five dash ninety-three, which is the consent item four point three.
Thanks, Mike.
Do you want to allow time for anyone that wants to leave to head out?
If anyone wants to leave, you. Not you.
You don't have to stay. I'll leave in time.
Here we know.
Here till ten o'clock, I'll leave again.
Somebody said this would be a strike.
I know, I have no problem.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Rick, for coming back.
Yep, yes, I went back and I looked to see if we pushed this to, you know, after the workshop, what would be impacted. With the commission meeting being the ninth and the workshop the twelfth, if we do it at the workshop, we would Coolidge is the biggest concern because I have to bring that contract to you. I can't bring the contract till it's done. So unless we're able to vote at the workshop, we would be in jeopardy of losing the low bidder that we have now. Again, we could rebid it. Our engineer estimate on that was eight point eight million and our low bid's at six five. So we've got a solid number, a little nervous about them because the next one up's over a million. But again, we'll manage that contract. So we're a little nervous. Again, we went out to bid on that in late August. And pretty much twelve twenty, December twentieth, I need to be on a contract with them.
That's Coolidge, right?
That's Coolidge. And there are, I think there's four accounts in here that are tied to the Coolidge job. The cemetery, we have a little more room on the cemetery. I think we're okay because I did bring that to commission already. So we have approved the contract. I just can't get it started until that money is is moved over. But I have December thirty for the cemetery. So really, the only thing we're in jeopardy on is Coolidge. And again, everything, you know, we we can push it. We do have a grant, a one point six million dollar grant through DEP. And we do need to file for an extension on that. The one with DOT, we're just getting penned, so we're okay there. Can we do? So the only other thing, and I think we're okay, I just need to reach out to DOT tomorrow. We did get state appropriations for the North Shore Culver. Again, that's for engineering services. We have not penned the contract with the engineer because there's a, it's an SSE form that has to be done. We've been working the last month back and forth between our consultant and DOT. We do have everybody working towards the December ninth commission meeting for that. But I can talk to DOT if we need to push that one. You know, I think it's just a matter of revising that form to do that. So those are the ones, again, not all the projects am I associated with. So I had Greg look from the utility side. I got a pretty good handle on him, but he definitely has a good handle on the utility side. I think we're okay on all of those. Again, Coolidge is the biggest fear for me. Again, we still may be able to pull it off, but if there's a way that we could look at those four accounts, I think that would definitely be in our best interest because of all the different funding sources and and the magnitude of that project that we have.
Do you have the accounts there?
I do. It is zero one zero eighty-six hundred five forty-one sixty fifty. Resinwald Gardens Coolidge. And that's three million four hundred seventy-four thousand one hundred. The next one is sewer impact fee zero six six eighty-six hundred five thirty-five sixty-eight seventeen. Resinwald Seven Blocks Waterman, and that's seven hundred and fifty thousand. The next zero four two eighty-six hundred five thirty-five sixty-six forty-six. Coolidge Sewer Man Expansion, sixty thousand six hundred. And I am missing one more that I looked at. Ah, yes, zero six five eighty-six hundred five thirty-three sixty-seven sixteen. The Resinwald Seven Blocks Waterman at a hundred and fifty thousand. So those four accounts will help me get Coolidge moving and then I will be bringing on the ninth, and I'll be bringing that contract to you.
That's what roughly five mil?
Yeah, probably about five mil. Because we have some other money programmed in this year.
Okay, all right.
North Shore Culver. How much money are you looking at here, Rick?
Four hundred and seventy-five thousand is what we're looking at.
What about cemetery?
The cemetery, I can still pull that off if we do the ninth and we decide that the rollover happens on the ninth. Then, you know, and and that's where I don't, I'm not sure if, based off that workshop, if we'll have the green light to do the rollovers at that point. That's going to take another commission meeting. As long as we can get the green light to roll over the cemetery.
You can make a hand.
Because that has to be done at the end of the the thirtieth, actually, of December.
And we won't have another meeting after that.
May I make a suggestion? I would say the Coolidge, the cemetery, not sure. And there's a one point six million dollar grant, did you say?
Yeah, it's a one point six for the FDP, but that's that's.
That's Coolidge.
Coolidge, okay. And then what was that about DOT?
The DOT is one point nine million, one point eight nine.
And that is also Coolidge.
We have time on, that's Coolidge.
That's revenue, yeah, that's revenue off of Coolidge.
I I would say that we approve those tonight and then study the other ones later.
Is that a total of four, based on what she's saying, or is that a fifth one?
Four, four is for Coolidge only. The the four that I ran off as a.
Yeah.
Is that solely for Coolidge? The cemetery is.
Not in any harms land right now.
Five, six, yeah, five hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred. And again, the, as long as we get the rollover in place, we've already executed, we've already executed the contract. I just can't get started because we can't write the PO. So we write the PO once the money's there. If I show, if I'm showing zero balance on the line item, I can't write a requisition to it. So that's, we've got the award in place, I just need to get that requisition. And as long as I do that by the thirtieth, I'm okay.
The thirtieth of this year?
Yeah, thirtieth of this year, December thirtieth of this year.
Okay.
So those, just so I understand, those four are your biggest, are your worries? Those are what you really like to leave here with? Is that right?
Coolidge pretty much has to happen. The cemetery is going to be a scramble, but we we can make that work as long as, yeah, I'm not sure the process at the workshop if if.
That's what I was going to ask. Can we do a workshop slash meeting or just end the workshop, open a meeting for ten seconds, a minute, vote and close it?
This this commission doesn't do anything in ten seconds.
So.
No, we really have, we have done LDRs and stuff like that, yeah. Just one item.
I don't like pushing, like with the cemetery, me saying, as long as we do it by the ninth, just do it.
So, yeah, so basically, any of the other ones that are not urgent, you can.
Push.
Push, you can have a workshop on and and have time to digest those, even the same day if they're of Dr. Levy's meeting. In order for you to vote on that, that day, you would have to have a special meeting and, you know, I I I'm unavailable. I have, I'm going to be out of the country, so I already put that on there. So we, if anything else can wait until the new year, then that's fine. And you can still have the workshop so that you can digest all the information and that way you have it. And then the decisions for the remainder of the items come in, unless you want to have a special meeting.
But we could do it on.
This year, but like, you know, during the week of the fifteen-ish, you know, I don't know what kind of travel plans are. But ideally today, if Coolidge, we already have the accounts and those are identified, that comes to about roughly four point seven million. If you wanted to approve that and discuss the cemetery, then that can go ahead tonight because of the way the resolution is written. As long, it's it's more expansive, maybe not all of these accounts may contribute to the Coolidge project, but that's fine. As long as we're not missing an account that's contributing, then that would be an issue. It would be a modification of the, essentially of the instruction to the commission, which would be, you're approving this resolution exclusively for these projects. And then we'd outline what the accounts are and then remove from the exhibit attached to it the remainder of them. So those would be at a later date.
And if it if it helps, we did, the last year during the budget process, we talked these in detail. And the cemetery I went through and and we talked in detail about that and and pricing. So the money's not changing. It was money that was approved prior year. We were just unable to get it started for whatever reasons. Coolidge was a lot of the permitting stuff. But it it's the same amount of money. We're not looking at changing any of the money, we're just changing the fiscal year. Had I been able to pull the trigger on September twenty-third or whenever our last meeting was, it would have been encumbered. It's just that matter of waiting that extra week to get it set. It it pushed it.
I mean.
I don't know if that helps or if it.
No, it 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 does. And 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 honestly, you know, Coolidge has been planned for a while and we all know that. It's not, it's the, it's the funds that are encumbered right now that that I have, I have, I want to look at. So I think for me right now, I'm I'm okay with Coolidge only and I want to look at everything else.
Did we, are we okay on North Shore? I know we have the appropriation, that's, I know that's engineering.
I I can reach out to DOT, we just need to revise their forms. So they've given us, they've given us an approval to bring the engineering contract that had to be done. And I'll just have to reach out to them tomorrow and we'll change the dates.
Is that like a guarantee? That's a normal practice?
I think it has to be. I mean, I don't, I don't see how they could.
I don't want to jeopardize that.
Yeah.
That is.
It's a little rework.
That one scares me.
I, yeah.
I do not want to lose that bridge.
Yeah.
And there's gas lines that run through there. There's all kinds of challenges with that road.
And that is also an appropriation.
Yeah, and this is, and coming from me, I'm okay with delaying the cemetery. But I want, I really, I really do want the Coolidge done. And I think that Culver, we.
We already, we already know it's coming.
I want, I want Coolidge, North Shore and Cemetery done.
Mike, I'm with you. I'm I'm not worried about the cemetery, but right now, I'm worried about it, but I'm I'm with you on 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 those.
And I will fight for the cemetery once we come to the first of the year. However, I think those those items, you know.
Yeah, it's not a must for me.
Yeah. I mean, I just said, I think I think Coolidge is the most important. I mean, we could do Coolidge now, we could do the Culver on the ninth if we had to. Then everything else could be at the workshop. But I mean, if we're all in consensus to go ahead and do the the Culver now, by all means, I think.
We don't have to agree, we just need three.
Put that to music.
I want three.
Okay.
And that's all I'm asking to, since he he's saying that he still has to have the cemetery by the ninth, right?
No.
Yeah, that's right.
We have to be under contract by December thirtieth.
So so the ninth is.
Budget, like budget rollover has to happen by the thirtieth.
I think we should do everything that has an appropriation from them, so the Coolidge, the Culver. I think we should, I'd like to vote on that now.
So the Culver? So the Culvert is four seventy-five.
And that.
Yeah, four sixty.
If I, if I may, Rick, I think that's, the modified number is four hundred on that, correct? I think four seventy-five was the old number, but I think we modified it to four hundred even with two and two, correct?
Yeah, it, it, when we went in for the appropriations, it was four hundred.
Four hundred.
The, the engineers, um, quite they sent us was like four, I think it was four forty-seven. So it's closer to the four fifty number, but.
Okay, so do we wanna do the four seventy-five then?
Four seventy-five, and that was listed on.
That's what, yeah, I'm going by the exhibit because that way.
That was advertised.
Yeah, four seventy-five.
Four seventy-five.
That's fine, I, but I think the appropriation had a different number. And if it does, it doesn't matter, we just, doesn't change, okay.
So, what I'm hearing right now is a consensus, I believe, say no if you don't agree, um, yes to Culvert and yes to Coolidge. I'm not hearing a no, so that's that. What about Cemetery?
I want the Cemetery.
I want it, but I'm willing to wait.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I'm good with.
When we say wait, we're waiting until.
I've worked with it for a while and so have you, Em.
Yeah.
So, but.
That's why I think it's important to just get over with.
But.
Potentially have to rebid, I, I.
Be one less thing we have to consider.
See if they can hold the price, but otherwise we'll rebid it.
Cemetery?
The Cemetery, yeah.
I'm like this, I'm with you.
Forty-five days more bidding time.
So that might be a rebid?
It'll be, it'll be two months.
Okay.
Can just do it?
And do it, push it back or?
I think one, one less thing we have to consider.
Coolidge, the, the.
The three.
Culvert, the Culvert and the Cemetery.
And the Cemetery.
Let's compromise.
Cemetery's there. Alright, and so then all other projects are going to, we don't need those for the ninth then.
No, what makes these so special, well, not, not as much Culvert, that was appropriation, but the other two is, we've had the bids out.
Right.
Yeah, and we got the bids in and the time of holding the bids is, we don't wanna lose what we have for solid.
I'll read it to make it clear.
The rest of them, things are really works.
Yeah, and I'll read it to make it clear.
Isn't gonna, gonna make a difference, we're not gonna lose something that's gonna trip us to rebid. A lot of things, we're going out to bid now anyway.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll have that answered by then.
Okay.
So we're okay.
Okay, good.
So did I miss something, are we doing this on the ninth or the twelve?
The ninth.
The ninth, okay.
No, no, hold on.
The ninth?
I thought the idea is to approve these tonight.
We're gonna.
Oh, these tonight, yeah.
Yes, we're approving these tonight.
Yeah, these tonight, but the others on the.
Yeah, and.
Five sixty-nine.
On the ninth.
The others do not have to come before you on the ninth.
No, I can, I can.
We can talk about it on the twelfth.
Because you wanna do.
Okay.
With Levy.
You can have a workshop on the twelfth.
Yeah.
Post conversation with, uh, Dr. Levy and then decide to have, if you want to schedule a special meeting later in December or go to January.
I don't think we'll, and, and again, I'm speaking, I, I probably have a bad habit of counting. I think we're okay waiting until January.
Great, thank you so much, appreciated, you're the best, Rick.
Okay.
Before we proceed, does anyone in the audience that wish to comment on this resolution? Seeing none, I am closing public input.
Pam, come talk for twenty minutes about it.
So the resi- the, the motion that would, is being made, when someone says motion, is going to be what I'm just gonna read. So it's Approval of Resolution Number twenty-five dash ninety-three. For the Coolidge project, the Culvert and the Cemetery projects.
Move approval, three of, three.
Second.
Uh, for those only.
Three.
The remainder will, the exhibit's gonna be modified to remove the remaining items for discussion.
December.
At a later time, uh, December twelfth, which would be separately advertised.
Move approval.
Uh.
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the motion.
Okay, okay, it's.
You got a motion.
Got a motion?
And I second it.
It's been motion and promptly second, roll call please.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Asbady?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Thank you, sir, for all your help and getting all that worked out.
Well, Tom has a question.
I just want to, um, ask again, I think I had asked this earlier. There are, uh, again, sixty-three projects on this list. If there are certain projects that are specifically of concern, uh, if you can get us those, then we'll be prepar-. I mean, we can be prepared to address all sixty-three, but it might be more efficient, uh. We may not wanna talk about lift station generators because the, that's kind of a no-brainer, we need a generator replacement program for our lift stations. But there are others on here that might be, um, might require a little more discussion. So what I'm asking is, if there are items specifically on this list that are of interest, that we need more information, please let us know. Uh, otherwise, we can be prepared to talk about all of them.
Are we gonna get the list in advance?
Uh, you, well, you, I can, we can resend it, you have the list.
I'll send it back to that, but, but what's on, what's included in those specific items?
I think what he's saying is look it over and wherever you see a problem, ask him what you need and maybe we'll have it all reserved.
If there's a project that you have questions on or, or aren't quite sure if you wanna move forward with, please let us know and we can be prepared to address them.
Tom, I suggest you send a revised exhibit, removing the ones that were approved today, so.
Fine.
They have less, you know, to, to look at as far as that's concerned.
We'll send a revised version.
Okay, and the workshop needs to be scheduled and advertised, thank you.
Okay.
No, what? The workshop for the discussion of the projects, not Mr. Levy.
Okay. Alright, that's it?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now, other business, the other business and future agenda items, uh, Mike?
I just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Sherry, can you give us a rundown of Light Up Eustace? Since it's coming right behind Thanksgiving.
Yeah, it's true.
Sorry to delay everybody, but I think this is important for us as a community.
I think it's great, ended on a good note, right?
It's great, it's the first time you've come to speak before.
No, it's not. It's a joke.
It's like the third time. We've said it, yeah.
He says that every time she comes up.
Yes, we have Light Up Eustace next Friday, November twenty-eighth, from five to nine in Farron Park. We're gonna kick things off with, we got the Eustace High School Band. We also have some carolers coming, we have our tree light up at around six fifteen. We have Magic One O Sevens, uh, Leslie Gale is gonna be hosting. Um, we also have the fabulous Equinox Orchestra coming in from Savannah, Georgia. They are a big band, uh, they're fantastic, I saw them in two thousand eighteen and you're gonna love them. Uh, we have the shed in Farron Park, so everyone knows, uh, it's from Larks donated their shed for the event. And we are gonna put Sant- we are gonna deck it and put Santa in there for photos, so that's what the shed in the park is. But I look forward to seeing you all there and I'll be sending you all some more details, we're just working on a couple little things to wrap up, but we'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
That's it for me, Mayor.
You're okay. Emily?
Yes, um, again, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I also, I have to promote our coming event on December first. We've had the schools in Eustace have, um, they made ornaments and we have all the trees that you see out there decorated. And on December first, the school, the kids will come, um, I think it's two representatives and a teacher, and we're gonna have a reception for them. And, uh, so we're pretty excited about it. And then on, on, uh, December ninth, it'll be open to the general public and it'll be, uh, before, a reception before our, um, com- uh, commission meeting. I also want to compliment, um, Pam and George, I attended the graduation, um, of the, um, their entrepreneurs and it was, it was awesome. And if all of them was set up in Eustace, it would be even greater. Um, but they had such quality and, and, uh, so many creative ideas. And some of them, you, you looked at and you heard and you said, why didn't I think of that? You know, it just seemed like it's something that was so obvious. So I, I enjoyed that and, um, I think they're doing a great job and, and, um, I hope to see more entrepreneurs go through and stay in the city. And that's about all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Gary? Uh, yeah, um, a few things, um, I like to renew my ask that we get the agenda out on Thursday. It's like these, these agendas are really detailed and, you know, um, getting them laid on Friday and not being able to contact anyone on the weekend. Um, as we can see, there's a lot of, a lot of information and, and, and an extra day would be, I think, would be, uh, would be awesome. Um. Um, Thanksgiving Day, I'll be at the park, um, with Feed Your Soul, um, helping people get, um, Thanksgiving meals. If, uh, anyone would like to come out and, uh, volunteer or donate, it is in the park on Thanksgiving Day from two to four. Um, and if anyone would like to donate, I have some information here, uh, Feed Your Soul. Um. As everyone may or may not know, I was on the city softball team. We did win our last game, our only game. That we won, uh, we did win twenty-one to three. I had a ball, I had a ball doing this and I'd like to thank all the departments that had people on our team. I know there are a lot of people from Public Works, uh, Park and Rec, uh, but, um, it was a lot of fun. Um, and I think there's, is Sam still here? Sam, do we, we have a league in the spring too? Okay, alright. Is he allowed to be on the team? Sam, oh, don't answer that. Sam, you, you really should've seen me at the last game, I mean, really, we did, we did wonderful. Um, but like I said, thanks for everyone from the city that was on the team.
I'm worried about our workman talk.
We should have the fire department stand by.
And, um, and lastly, um, you know, over this past year, you know, I've made it one of my, uh, initiatives, uh, for economic development, uh, for us. I've, I've, I had a, I had a, uh, an epiphany, uh, a few, a few days ago. We are gonna have to be in charge of our destiny. We can't leave it to the private sector, no offense to the private sector people. They're gonna come in and do what's best for them, we need to do what's best for us. And we might, we might be doing some things that we're not comfortable with. But I think it's something we need, we need to look at, we have to be in charge of our own destiny. If that's buying land to bring in commercial properties and, 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 and businesses, we might need to do that. We might need to find a way to finance all these things that we're trying to do and it may be something that we've not, we've not done before. We need to be in charge of our own destiny and not letting the private sector detail what we want to do. Cause all they wanna do is annex land and put in houses. So, and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
George?
I, man a few words, I really don't have time.
You should. Okay, I'll man a few words, you're done.
Touched on the veterans there, you gonna talk about that a little?
No, you go ahead.
We, uh, we were at the vet- veteran's celebration and, uh, it was a great celebration though, I, I have to admit. I know, um, Willie agrees, we need to get more people out there to, to honor these people. It, it, it really was embarrassing to me as a part of the city, so, um. Before I could even say anything, Sherry came up to me and said, we're gonna make this much better, uh, next year. She just got here. I believe in, in her, I, I can't go to Taveri's anymore cause if they know we're a commissioner and we took her, they wanna knock us off, but. Um, it, it, uh, it was a good event she put together, it was great, I just would've liked to see more people there. Uh, touching on Emily, which when you go last, I guess, everybody gets to talk about some of those stuff. But we started the mega workplace with the hope to touch thirty people a month. We are now touching somewhere just over three hundred and twenty-five a month, way beyond any expectation we ever had. We had ten of the best presentations of high tech, agricultural tech, uh, and, uh, some great ideas. Kirby Smith, our county commissioner was there and he is pursuing, uh, a presentation that was made for an app that will let you go rent mini storages anywhere. So instead of driving around and calling these mini storages, you get on this app and they can adjust if they have ten by tens too many, put the right price. You look in the app and you can find where the closest one to you is for a ten by ten and if it's ready right then and there, you can apply for it. Get your code sent to you right then and there, drive down there and go right in without ever seeing anybody. And that's a phenomenal app that I think is gonna go off the, off the, off the, uh, sector, so there's, and that's a Eustace person. There were ten people presenting that UCF brought, four of those ten were from Eustace. One was in Eustace but has moved to Apopka, but, uh, we have a lot to be proud of. We've got a lot of talent hitting here, seventy-two percent of everybody, uh, in the workforce leaves Lake County. And we've gotta change that. And, and, uh, and I think we're on the road to, to doing that, especially up in the north part of town, so. That's, uh, that's important and to share with you and, and we're proud of the relationship UCF has. They have now grown their participants the fastest that any incubator has ever grown that UCS has, UCF has ever had. And, uh, that's, that's something for us all to be proud of because you guys all voted for that long before I came along and put it in place. So, uh, there's a lot of goods, a lot of good stuff you guys need to be proud of. That is it, happy Thanksgiving.
Willie, one more thing I'd like to say.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to really, um, compliment Ellis Forman for those trees out there, for the idea and the decorations around City Hall. She's done a magnificent job, so if you guys see it, come tell her it was a good job. Cause she really puts a lot of effort into it and, and she's so creative, so I just wanted to give a shout out to Ellis.
Uh, Tom?
Yeah, it's been mentioned a couple times, but I just wanted to reiterate that we consolidated our December meetings, so now we just have one meeting uh, in December on Tuesday, December ninth. And then it's been mentioned several times that we have the workshop with Dr. Levy on Friday, December twelfth, that is nine AM at the Women's Club. And then I will be out of the week, out of the office next week, I will be reachable, uh, but Miranda will be around if you need anything. That's it.
Why say that to Women's Center?
Uh, Dr. Levy did not want it in this building. Uh, he wanted it off-site, he felt that you'd be more relaxed and able to speak more freely.
And he's.
And the, uh, Community Center was not available, so it's at the Women's Club.
It's better, I think.
And, and everybody, put on your thinking hats, your ideas and, and, and that desire to make us a team, come with that attitude, please.
Okay.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Alright, well, thank you. Um, I, I wanted to, uh, again, give kudos to our Public Works, uh, team and our fire and our police. Spring Ridge, you know, we told them that we'd like to have them in by November and it was done in, what, six days? Outstanding job, outstanding. Um, you know, I went out a couple of times and, you know, just to see how fast they were moving. Um, I'm glad we took it over, the, uh, the residents are glad that we took it over. Uh, so, great job, team, great job.
Miranda just left their homeowner's association meeting.
Oh, yeah, can you give us a? That's right.
Good evening, Miranda Burrows, Assistant City Manager. So we, uh, Kelleher, Swanson and myself just were at the HOA meeting, it was this evening at six o'clock. Overwhelming sentiment of appreciation, they were all well aware that it was a five-o vote for commission to support that, really appreciative. There were some good questions, uh, that were raised, but it was really positive and they wanted to make sure they extended their thanks to you guys, so thank you very much.
Thank you for going out.
Thank you.
Um, I, uh, uh, go to the schools every now and then and I, I went to Eustace, Eustace Heights, um, the other day. And they, the principal let me know that they started their, their tutoring. And overwhelming success on that, uh, so I think that it was, it was money well spent, so, uh, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Tom, uh, for making that happen. Uh, we have a new football coach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen.
Yes, uh, he will be at the chamber meeting on the, uh, the third. So if you get a chance, uh, to meet him, uh, I'd love for us to get behind him. Um, I think he's just what, what our, our kids need, okay? Uh, great job, team, this has been a lot longer than I expected it to go. Uh, but, uh, happy Thanksgiving, everyone be safe and we'll see you in December.
Thank the department has for the luncheon.